Good evening. I now call to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Chico Unified School District on June twelfth, two thousand and twenty four. It is just after five P M. And we will be going into closed session at this time and we will return to open session at six P M. Thank you.
Thank you.
welcome to the June 12, 2024 Chico Unified School Board regular meeting. And we are now in open session. We were in closed session. During closed session, the board voted unanimously to ratify a settlement agreement to resolve a special education dispute against the district pursuant to the agreement. The district authorized educational assessments and services for an eligible special education student and agreed to reimburse a portion of the parent's attorney fees. Under the express terms of the agreement, the board's ratification of agreement does not constitute an admission of liability by the district. Also during closed session, the board deliberated on approval of the Chico High School principal position that had opened up for the next school year. The board voted unanimously to approve a new principal. This person has been an administrator in the district for 15 years, has been at Marsh Junior High School, Chapman Elementary School, and at Chico High School. And I'm really proud to say she is also Chico Unified's first woman high school principal. So please, everybody, give a round of applause to Ms. Erica Sheridan. Looking forward to seeing you grow in that position. With that, could everybody please stand for the flag salute?
I'd like to be with the flag in the United States of America and in this republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Superintendent Staley, are you ready for the superintendent's report?
I am ready. As we do at the beginning of each meeting, we like to honor some superintendent awards for people that are doing exemplary work in their position. So at this point, I would like to call up Joe Morris. Or Eric German.
Thank you for having us here. I'd like to introduce Billy and Eric. They are two of our wonderful maintenance workers that work for us at MNO. And as many of you know, we get asked to do a lot of things out there. And both these two gentlemen bring with them a skill set that you just couldn't ask for or hope for. They can do anything we ask of them, and they always do anything we ask of them. Whether it's getting up on a roof in the pouring rain to look at a roof leak, or climb into an attic to work on and help with HVAC units, or doing concrete work, or flooring, or custodial work. And on top of that, their work schedule is a Wednesday through Sunday schedule. So they work every weekend for us at the district. And so on Saturdays and Sundays, when we have events at the school sites, these guys are the face of the school district. And they meet the public with just such positive attitudes, smile, and can-do attitudes, that they're what we want to represent Chico Unified. And since we brought these guys on and they started doing these weekends for us, we've gotten nothing but compliments from the groups that are renting our buildings, whether it's the dance recitals, the flag football games, chess matches, or the robotics competitions. These guys meet them there, they get these buildings open, they answer any questions. If something goes wrong, these are the first guys they go to, and they're always there with a positive attitude. So I just want to thank these guys for the work that they do for Chico Unified and the way they represent us, and just thank them for all that hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And next, I would like to ask Damon Whitaker to come to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. It is truly an honor and a privilege to present Priscilla Burns tonight. Priscilla is culminating a tremendous educational career this year. She has retired at the end of this year. But her impact on Chico Unified and specifically Pleasant Valley High School has been unbelievable and tremendous for so many years. Forty-one years as an educator. She has done some truly outstanding and amazing things. She took a culinary program at Pleasant Valley High School that was housed in a small classroom with very antiquated equipment and stoves. And she worked hard for several years to secure grant funding and matching funds to build what most people in the North State and Northern California are calling the Taj Mahal of culinary programs. Her classroom culinary labs and restaurant are like no other around. And it was through mostly Priscilla's hard work determination to get that accomplished, along with the partnership with Chico Unified School District. But Priscilla was truly a driving force in that. And not only has she done amazing things for culinary, but she has been a CTE coordinator for the district and helped support all the CTE programs in the district, helping them to write grants and define funding and improve programs and offer advice and wisdom. She has been an amazing person to me as a new administrator when I came in five years ago, sitting side by side with me and helped me to understand some of the challenges and impacts that CTE has on our community and our school district. And so the last thing I truly want to say about Priscilla is that we are going to miss her. She has been amazing and wonderful to work with over the last 15 years, and she truly is an icon at Pleasant Valley High School for all the things she's done for our students. She grew a culinary program, like I said, that was housed in a very small classroom from two sections to eight sections of culinary. And so it's amazing what she's done at Pleasant Valley High School. So congratulations, Priscilla. I'm truly honored to be here and present you.
Thank you.
And for the board, you should have received these that are sitting there. If you open to page six, there's a great article in this pamphlet that should be up there for you related to Priscilla Burns and the CTE culinary program at Pleasant Valley. It's a great article if you have a few minutes to read it.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we just finished the school year. We had our graduations on Friday, and it's just always so rewarding to see the students promote, whether it is from kindergarten to first grade, from fifth grade to sixth grade, or to see our seniors get up and walk across that stage. And yes, they're leaving us, but we know they're prepared and going on to hopefully great things. Jay has some data that he wants to share about the number of promotions and graduates that we had. And then we'll jump into another announcement from our Chico State visiting colleagues.
I'm going to bring up Mr. Tietz Sullivan and Peter Gaudereau to go over the numbers. They did all the work on that, so I'm going to give them. They could have handed it to me, but I'm going to have them come up and do it.
So in the elementary world, we had 850 fifth graders matriculate on. They all have kind of promotion ceremonies at their school sites. It's a really cool experience for families to gather there. A lot of excitement about it. The kids are very excited, so it's a neat experience. The one that is really always the most exciting, though, I would say honestly, is the K. I'm going to call it graduation. It's not really graduation. It is the ultimate Kodak moment for families, though, to have their kindergartner walking across their diploma and thing like that with it. So it's always very exciting with those things. We have about 850 kindergartners matriculating on, we have about 850 fifth graders also matriculating on. The other thing that just excited me, and this is going to sound kind of odd, we got a chance to look at our preliminary local reading indicator scores, and they are just like busting it out, like hands down the best it's ever been by far. We're just hoping it matriculates, or it represents in that way with state testing scores also. But our local indicators for primary BPST and star reading, and they're just dramatically, just a great positive trend with those things.
Are you attributing that to TK?
Not quite. I think it helps in the long run, though. I think we've done a lot of professional development with all of our teachers, TK through five, about reading instruction, kind of educating, just talking a lot about reading and professional development around reading in general.
And I get to share promotion numbers from junior high, and then I'll share with you the high school graduation numbers. Starting with Bidwell Junior High School, we had 305 students promote. On a Chico Junior, we had 308 students promote. Moving on to Hank Marsh, we had 244. Twenty-eight students promoted from Oakdale, Cal, and AFC. And our school, Oakbridge, promoted six to the high schools. For high schools, Chico High had 477 graduates. PV, Pleasant Valley, had 400 graduates. Fairview slash Oakdale had 59 graduates. And then finally, Oakbridge had 39. So as you know, it was a wonderful last Thursday and Friday. While it was hot, it was still merry. It was a good time. So thank you all.
And with that, I will turn it back to you, Madam President.
Thanks, Ms. Staley. So as Superintendent Staley already mentioned, we're moving into announcements, but the first announcement is that we have present at tonight's meeting 18 educators from the study of the United States Institute for Secondary Educators. And I would invite the program lead to come up and introduce the group and just speak on your behalf.
Thank you. Yeah, the group came June 1st and leave Chico June 27th, and then move on to Chicago and Washington DC. And today, as part of their very, very busy agenda, they were at Fairview this morning and had a wonderful few hours there. They will come up and introduce themselves and their countries, and it's just our honor to be with them during this time. Thank you.
Okay. Hello. It's a very great honor to be in front of you and meeting you all. My name is Ruth Hiron. I am from Guatemala, and I work with teachers during the morning. And I am also a teacher from elementary, and I have been teaching all grades. And in the afternoons, I also work in a program for adults in teaching English as a second language.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Litt Longseet Wong. Call me Litt. I'm from Thailand. I'm a school director from the secondary school, and the path of the up countryside and northeast of Thailand. And nice to be in Chico today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reevan. I'm from Madagascar. I'm a school director and English teacher as well, grade six and grade seven. That's all. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Martinis. My nickname Marty. I am from Indonesia. I live in the western part of Indonesia, Aceh. I am a school director, leading 550 students from primary, lower secondary, and upper secondary. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Antonis. I come from Greece. I am biologist. I teach biology in senior high school. And at the same time, I work with Institute for Educational Policy in Greece on new curriculum and new biology books for senior high school. Thank you.
Correct.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel. I'm a regional inspector near Paris in France, and I'm in charge of recruiting, assessing, and training teachers of English as a foreign language. I'm really glad to be here.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Ilah. I'm from Malaysia. I'm the assistant to the school principal in charge of extra activities after school for 2,831 students.
I'm from Malaysia. I'm the assistant to the school principal in charge of extra activities after school for 2,831 students. Thank you.
My name is Eric. I'm from the Netherlands. I'm a history teacher, and I write about education in my home country. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. This is Huda Hosami from Lebanon. It's a great honor to be here today in front of you. I'm an English language teacher, instructional supervisor, and UN program coordinator. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Susan Galvez, and I come from Honduras, and I coordinate programs for young and adult who didn't have opportunity to work in a regular time to school.
I'm Aliz. I'm from Mauritius, small island near the east of Africa. I'm a principal of a boys' school, 950 students. Thank you for having us today.
Dajahao. Hello, everyone. I'm Winnie from Taiwan. I teach chemistry in high school. It's my great pleasure to be here. Thank you, everyone.
Hola. Hello. I'm Abel from Costa Rica. So happy to be here and see this because this is something I usually see on TV. I'm the English regional advisor for the Public Ministry of Education in Punta Arenas, the Pacific Coast. You're going to be welcome there in Costa Rica.
This is Nadine from Israel. I'm the regional and the national counselor for English studies in the Jewish sector and the inspector of English studies in the Jewish sector. Happy to be here.
Namaste. Good evening. My name is Jotna. I'm from India. I'm a secondary school teacher, and I also work with the district education officer for the upliftment and practicality of many other policies at the ground level. Thank you. It's an honor to be here. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Horatio. I'm from Romania. I'm a man with many talents, but I'm a history teacher and a vice principal. I know how this man feels. So thank you very much for this evening.
I'm Susanna from Slovakia. I'm a principal of a very small school and an English teacher at the same time. Thank you for having us here in Chico.
Hello, all. I'm Dosu. Dosu from Benin Republic, West Africa. I am an EFL teacher, researcher, and textbook writer. Let me tell you that you have a wonderful community.
Thank you, everyone. Well, welcome to our country and to our community. Our board here, we are elected from our community, and we all have a variety of backgrounds, from education to healthcare and agriculture. And yeah, we're just excited for you to engage with folks here and learn what you can and vice versa, and we hope that you enjoy your time here in Chico.
And we apologize for the really, really hot weather. We hope it's cooler in Chicago.
Well, we are still in announcements. Are there any further announcements that the board members would like to make at this time? Alrighty, hearing none. We'll move on to items from the floor. I think I have a list here. Oh, we don't have any signups for items from the floor at this time, so we will move on ahead to our consent calendar. Is there anybody that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the consent calendar? This is our first vote for the evening, so we will do a roll call vote. We'll start at the end with Mr. Tennis. Would you like to start us off?
Tennis, aye.
Congan, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Landau, aye.
Robinson, aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to our discussion action calendar, under Educational Services, public hearing informational on the draft 2024 to 2025 Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP.
Coming up to speak on this is our two very hardworking people that have been locked up in their offices for the last couple of weeks and a little on the edgy side. But to bring this forward to you is Tina Keen and Tim Karas. Thank you.
Good evening. As Jay said, we'll be presenting you with the draft 2024 LCAP. Tonight's item is informational only. The final LCAP will be up for approval at the next board meeting on June 26th. So a little bit about the LCAP in general. The LCAP is our, essentially our strategic plan on how district, how our district will use the funds for out, that we receive from the state of California, out of California's local control funding formula, or we commonly refer to it as LCFF, to improve outcomes for all students. By statute, our LCAP is required to address eight priorities, and I'm not going to go ahead and read all those for you, but you can see them there. Student outcomes, student engagement, et cetera, et cetera. So the way the process works to get us to this point before I get into kind of the meat of this year's LCAP is we spend a lot of time, beginning in the fall, meeting with community members. We had a 19 meetings this year? Nineteen community meetings, a number of student meetings, talking with our community regarding their input on how we're doing, how we can improve, and what's going well. In addition, the goals and actions are heavily influenced by data. We are actually beginning to look at this year's data right now. Ted mentioned earlier, the elementary reading scores coming in look very promising. That tells us, let's keep doing what we're doing to get those scores up. Additionally, smarter balanced scores, our state academic tests, as well as our smarter balanced English and math, as well as our science test results are out now. They're currently being processed by staff, and in-depth analysis will begin shortly. So really, the whole cycle of LCAP begins, you know, June. It really never ends. We just move on to the next year and start the cycle over again. Tonight's, the LCAP we're presenting tonight is the first year of a new three-year cycle. So what you'll see when you look at the attached draft and the agenda is a new template that was put out by the state this year. So this is a three-year cycle. So this year, all of our data that you've seen in that LCAP draft is essentially baseline data, and we'll be measuring our growth against that baseline data over the next three years. Included in the attached document is the Local Control Funding Formula Budget Overview for Parents. So this is a simplified view of the dollars. The LCAP itself is a very, very lengthy document, not very reader-friendly. And so the budget overview is a great place for the community, community members, parents, to get a quick look at the dollars attached to LCAP. Also included is the actual, or is the annual update for the 23-24 LCAP, where we're reviewing our metrics that are attached to the goals that I'm about to go over and assessing our progress towards meeting those goals. And then finally, the actual LCAP, the 24-25 LCAP. So those are all included in the attached documents. So Chico Unified creates our goals around the multi-tiered system of supports. So goal one, so we're looking at academics, social-emotional learning, as well as behavioral learning and supports. So goal one is around academic instruction and tiered interventions that we will provide them and provide opportunity for all students to achieve at a high level. One thing that sometimes throws folks off who are not used to looking at the LCAP, which is most of the state of California, is the term goal. This is obviously a very high-level goal. Under each goal, we have very, very specific metrics, and that's where the data comes in. So while the goal is very high-level here, we have very, very specific metrics that you can see in that document that specify how many percentage points we're expecting all of our student groups to increase each year, and so on. Goal two is to provide social-emotional learning supports and interventions to promote healthier student attitudes about themselves and others. Goal three is to provide behavioral instruction and supports as a proactive approach to creating a safe, positive climate and school culture. And goal four is there to meet a new requirement set forth by the state. Chico Unified has begun to receive what is called Equity Multiplier Funding from the state of California. And only certain sites across the state receive this funding and are required to add this goal to their LCAP. What the state does is they look at the non-stability rates at a site, which is essentially measures student movement in and out of the school. So a site with a high non-stability rate would have more movement in and out of the school. So the kids are less likely, the average student is less likely to be in their classroom at that site from August to June, which is ideal for learning. When kids move, when kids are highly mobile, moving in and out of a site, it creates challenges for the staff. We just don't have a heck of a lot of time with them in general. So the four sites receiving Equity Multiplier Funding are Fairview, Center for Alternative Learning, Academy for Change, and Oakdale. So when we talk budget, you can see the estimates here for 24-25, which we're about to start in July. You can see at the top in the blue band, the $216 million figure. That is our total budget restricted and unrestricted funding. The figure on the bottom in the peach color is our LCAP. That's our LCAP funding. That's what the plan is written to address. And you can see that figure is about, is almost $19 million. So the $19 million, everything that we spend out of there needs to be accounted for in our plan. So when we look at goal one, goal one is by far the beefiest. It has the most actions, and you can see the actions written on the left-hand side of this chart here. It also has the most metrics. And this is goal one, again, and this is academic learning. That's what we're here to do primarily in a school district. That's why it's beefier. It reflects our beliefs to ensure that our kids are achieving at the highest level possible. So you can see here, academic support essentially, bilingual aids, instructional aids, and device replacement for predominantly our Chromebooks, which allows students to access curriculum. We see educational software for assessment and curriculum. And we can see teachers on special assignment to support our instruction and assessment plans. These folks are crucial to driving professional development, assessment practices, and we pretty much review any big issue that comes to the district with our teacher leaders. Additionally, you can see at the bottom there art music and extra PE in the elementary grades.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
Is this where our DLC also comes in?
This is. Yeah.
Gotcha. I just, I feel like we kind of circle back.
Yeah.
For a while about how important DLC and our TOSSAs are.
Uh huh.
Yeah, so just curious. Thank you.
You can see secondary counselors, librarians and library media assistants, all-day kindergarten aides, funds that we allocate to sites to make their own decisions around intervention and instructional needs, medically necessary and off-campus instruction, and elementary reading specialists. So talking about these actions here, we're required to evaluate them for their effectiveness. And a couple of things that pop out here are all-day kindergarten aides, reading specialists. The data that we see so far indicates a high level of effectiveness. So as you saw on the first budget slide, not all the money that comes into Chico Unified is under LCAP and is addressed by the plan. We receive a significant amount of other monies from the state of California and the federal government in the form of grants, in the form of Title I, Title II, title dollars. And really, the decisions that we make on how to spend that money and what our needs are really come just as much from the community input that we receive as the LCAP. We're listening to that input, and a lot of times, we're using grant money to fund services that were brought up by parents at LCAP meetings. So some of the grant-funded actions under goal one, you can see here, we can see some of the elementary reading teachers moving on into future years, software systems, high school support, academic support such as academic success, math lab and power reading sections, increasing CTE opportunities. That was mentioned earlier, that's a significant amount of grant money that we use to fund those programs. High school block level, block schedule implementation, training, tutoring, et cetera, et cetera. So these are the grant-funded services, some of the grant-funded services funded, not from LCAP, but from other sources under goal one. Any questions or comments on goal one?
Thank you, Tim. I have a question. Bullet number lots of the way down where it says high school advanced placement, advanced placement capstone.
Mm-hmm.
Please describe.
Let me get to that.
Yes, the previous one.
There we go. There we go. Sorry about that. So advanced placement, capstone, high school advanced placement is a, in general, is a program, a set of courses that allows students to accelerate and receive college credit for classes that they take in high school.
Okay. That would be.
Yeah, it's black. That means it's no cost to the district, and we're going to have those kids in our sections anyway. We have folks that are teaching those sections. In particular, the capstone piece of that is a program that has been in place at PV for, I believe, four or five years. And it's a set of two courses that kids take that get them familiar with research processes and inquiry. The student feedback has been great on that, and we know hearing back from And, you know, hearing back from kids once they get to college and then on into grad school, the feedback has been great.
Thank you.
All right. With that for goal two, I'm going to turn it over to Tina.
All righty. As Tim mentioned earlier, goal two centers around our social-emotional learning pieces. The LCAP funding for the positions and staffing that you see here cover that. We have, and by the way, goal one, as you know, as this board knows, goal one is the most lengthy of the goals that we have. So, you'll notice goal two is shorter than that. Academics are the forefront of what we do here. So, it stands to reason that those would have the most actions and pieces of expenditures with them. So, goal two, the social-emotional focused actions based on community feedback. As Tim mentioned, we do take into account a lot of what our families and staff and students say, not only once, but multiple years in a row sometimes, if we don't have the funding. When times were lean before COVID, we were not able to fund a lot of those pieces. We didn't have the money coming through from the federal government that we've had, that we've seen over these last couple of years. So, we are always on the lookout for things. We're always looking to leverage how we can accommodate some of those pieces of input that families have shared with us that are really crucial to kids and their learning. So, a lot of them up here, you see, we've been able to put into place. The homeless foster coordinator is one that, right there in the middle. The top one was years, I have to say, several years of encouragement from our educational partners to increase the targeted case manager time. That has been very, very beneficial on sites. And schools and families recognize it at every meeting that we have. Additional counselors, that was a gift, a silver lining coming out of COVID in a lot of ways, with some of that money that's come through in the form of grants, some of which are running through the years 25, 26, and 26, 27, the school years 20, 26, 27. So, we do keep that in our mind of how we will continue those services and supports that people have continuously. When we asked for their input, they gave it. When we've had them implemented, they continue to support that. And it's our job to keep on the lookout for ways we can keep moving and being really looking ahead on that. We have, yeah, yes.
Thank you, Tina. I did want to ask you to kind of differentiate between the elementary guidance, counseling, assistance, and the counselors. We, I know that the parent support, especially for the targeted case managers, is, "Don't you dare try and take those away from our school sites." But what's the difference between counselors and elementary guidance counselors?
That's a great question. And I'm going to take it back, a little historical knowledge here. When the LCAP first came into play in 2013, over, you know, many years ago, we heard from families at the elementary level, "Let's get some counselors in. Let's be proactive with our students when they're young." We heard that, we heard that, we added elementary counselors. And then a grant came through, kind of in the midst of that, at some of the sites. I happen to be an administrator at a site that did have that grant come through for guidance assistance. And those folks came in to really work with the primary-age kids, grades kindergarten through third grade in particular. They worked with them a lot on conflict management, giving kids tools when they get frustrated, when they get upset, if they're worried, if they're concerned. And a program came into play that grew throughout our district. And the guidance counselors were part of the people, that group of folks that delivered those lessons. They were consistent among all of our sites, which was really nice. Kids were getting all the same messages. So, if they moved to a different school, it was the same language and same strategies for kids to help manage conflict when it arose. So, those elementary guidance assistants, they were born out of that. And they have grown from that grant opportunity into our LCAP. I hope that helps. Any other questions on goal two before I move to goal three? Okay. Goal three focuses on behavior supports and interventions. We have our opportunity programs there, which are including alternative education, supplemental staffing. That has been new at our junior high. And input that we have heard from families for alternatives to suspension, keeping kids who may have a suspendable offense, keeping them on campus instead of going home in a structured environment, and reentry, and usually talking with families, and talking with counselors, and talking with teachers, and making sure that students can have work to do, and some kind of interaction with some folks in a small group setting to just kind of reset and be in a safe environment to get their work done and reflect. We have our coaching stipends that we put into that piece. Over 50% of our high school students participate in sports throughout the year. Campus supervisors, of course, are crucial. And our elementary and secondary project specialists have come also through some input from not only staff and families, but also kids that want to make sure that sites are safe, that behaviors are managed, and also that teachers are given the skills and learning about different challenges that have come up over the last few years in particular, after the pandemic, and really making sure to keep our environment safe.
Could you clarify what project specialists are?
Yes, we have two, well, two funded out of here, one funded out of another fund. So, three total. But they really go in and talk with teachers that are having a tough time with some behaviors that, for one reason or another, are tricky to manage and causing not only, you know, angst for students, but angst for classmates maybe and teachers. So, it's really having somebody come in and coach and say, "Hey, here's some ideas. Let's try this." They'll work alongside the teacher. They'll work with the student. It's very, very hands-on, very positive. And typically, I know I always like when people share good ideas with me. And I can then try them on my own and have some success with them. That is the goal right there. It might take a little bit of time. It might take more than a little bit of time. But that's the goal right there. We just finished our first year with them. So, we will continue to evaluate through the metrics that Tim mentioned, how effective that will be. All righty. And you see here again, the pie chart from the, similar to the first two goals that we talked about as far as the community feedback, including a lot of the pieces that we talked about just a bit ago. We know that goals one, two, and three, and we've talked about this up here before, they do connect, they collide. The worlds do collide. We know that kids who are feeling well and have positive feelings towards school and want to be at school and have behavior supports that serve their needs well are more than anything ready to learn. And that's our goal. That's the name of the game. So, a lot of the pieces of feedback that have come to us do dovetail into each other. They canvas the academic needs, the social-emotional needs, and the behavior. And it was really hard to tease them out and put them in their own separate bucket. So, we just created a bucket of all of them together. And that's what you see on this slide.
Just clarification. It was mentioned kind of in the first goal, but the difference in color in your bullet points is...
Sure, I can clarify that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, black print, the black ink there that you see are things that we've had that may come out of general fund or maybe what we call no cost out of a separate pot of money. The dark blue are the LCAP funding, and the light blue are the other funding sources. And again, I'll reference the difference in the pots of that money between the full, big pot of money and the LCAP money. So, another example of how we kind of leverage those funds the best that we can.
Gotcha. It just wasn't clear in the slides. There's not a key that says this color beats this besides for the pie chart, so...
Yeah, the pie, I'm sorry about that. The black is kind of the running pieces that we have had in play, yes. Any questions on goal three? Okay, I'll keep going. Goal four, as Tim mentioned, is the newest goal per statute that we have. We call it the Equity Multiplier Funding Goal. And there are four sites that will get that pot of money in order to help the students that come through those sites that are very transient and have a high socioeconomic level of need. So, Andrew Mull, who is the principal, the site administrator over there at Fairview, has worked with us, gosh, he's worked with us a lot over the last couple of months. And he has worked and reworked this pot of money to best serve the needs over there at his site. So, this is the first year out with this. He is having some assistance there at Oakdale. He's having intervention specialists for students at Cal. He also is including the reading intervention sections additionally at those three sites. A social worker, he is able to have a piece of that come in, and then a bilingual instructional aide that is needed as well.
So, this is all new, that doesn't currently yet exist?
It's, right, he's got it hired and he's ready to roll. The money is in the bank, as we say. It is here.
In the beginning of your presentation for this item, you said four. And I count there are more than four school sites or programs.
There's Oakdale. You'll see that there at the top. There's Cal right below it, Center for Alternative Learning, Fairview, and AFC.
Oh, the middle one doesn't count.
They all weave together.
Yeah. Yeah. Some of these people are on staff now? Because I thought I met some of them at graduation.
Well, he could be adding some additional time. For example, the social worker, he does have a wellness counselor that is working in that capacity. I'm sorry, there's a fly right here that's... Social worker is working in that capacity. He's augmenting that. So, yes, there may be some things. He clearly has a vision. If you haven't been over to visit him and his site, he has a clear vision of need. He understands his students and where they're coming from and what they need. So, this is the first stab at using this funding to see how it goes. Tim mentioned we are held to the metrics very tightly in this new round of LCAP. So, the metrics will show. I mean, the numbers will show for us. If we're off the mark, we go back and we rework it with him.
Under this one, in terms of the metrics, just like a snapshot of what it is that we'll be looking at to determine next year what the level of success is on this? Like, I could see reading intervention being a pretty straightforward one, but how do you quantify that?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, good question.
So, in the, I'll use reading intervention and take the easy one. We would look at students that received that service versus students that did not receive that service and compare growth. The alternative ed campuses are very, very solid in their assessment plan. They're actually much more robust than our comprehensive sites out of necessity. They're very much on top of that. We'll use that in addition, local reading assessments in addition to smarter balance testing. With social workers, intervent, let's see, social workers, that may be something like student climate surveys, social worker contacts, where I just keep track when we hire a new position, you know, keep track of what they're doing, you know? How many contacts are we making and who are we contacting? Along with other metrics to measure the effectiveness of those calls and contacts.
Could something like attendance also be a metric that we look at?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. President Dalby mentioned attendance. And one of the things that I have spoken with Mr. Mull about is the fluctuating numbers. Because I, you know, I'm always there at graduation. And I noticed this year, the numbers of who was graduating from Fairview versus who was graduating from the independent study. And so, I asked. And he said that one of the problems they're dealing with is getting kids to stick when they get there. Any of this money going toward that kind of intervention?
I would say to a certain degree, it could be argued that all of them. We have, of course, you know, targeted case managers, social workers, counselors, administrators, reaching out to kids, working with them in various ways to get them to school more often. But also, when kids feel successful at school academically, they're going to be more likely to be engaged and come.
Well, it was clear that the students knew who the targeted case manager was. You know, there was, I saw interactions with some of those employees. And so, you know there's significant contact being made with the students. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing, as Tim just pointed out, it's the intervention piece to me. They have a long time had a great, a great culture of connection at the Alt Ed site. And where I think he's really wanted to add more is in this intervention. Because as Tim mentioned, when there are learning gaps, kids do disengage from school. They don't want to be there. So, the sooner we can fill those gaps, the more they will want to be there. Any more questions on that? Okay. The LCAP at a glance, this link right here does take you to a shortened version of last year's LCAP. It is well over 110 pages long, I believe. And not very easy reading that you might want to partake in. However, the board a couple of years ago said, "Hey, can you guys make this a really easily digestible piece of literature that we can all look at and understand?" And it has been a help. It was a great suggestion then. We found somebody who works with us on a really nice graphic piece, about 15 pages. So, that's considerably less... There it is, thank you. Less than the 110. It's got color, it's got charts, and it's always, always moving every year to the newest version of the LCAP. So, thank you for that. It's been helpful. It is on our website if anybody chooses to look at that instead of the big one. Our next steps, Tim mentioned this a little bit earlier. Tomorrow morning, the draft LCAP will be posted on the webpage. The public comment period per statute, we have running from June 13th through June 25th. We welcome any kind of questions that come up, any input. I love to talk about it, Tim does. We all are happy to answer any questions about it. You can look on our website for all the information. Address is there if people are so inclined to send information to us. And then, Tim and I will return on the 26th.
Have we taken steps on the tech side of things to make sure that our webpage doesn't crash once we post the LCAP?
Are you worried about that? I agree.
I got a question.
Has it?
Is this going to be the last, you know, LCAP, like, presentation that you make, Tina Keen?
Oh, no. I'm still with the LCAP.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Good.
I will stay, as long as the LCAP will have me. I will be there. I'm finally getting it down after all these years. Yeah, and we do have a new template. There are some shifts to it. And I think they've been good shifts. They're holding people, not only just Chico Unified, but they're holding every school district accountable. If something, if an action is not working, if we're putting money towards something and not getting any bang for the buck, it needs to go. And that's what the state has said. And I do agree with them. We've had a lot of people to thank with this. It's not an easy thing. As Tim mentioned, it takes a lot of big brains, a lot smarter than Tim and I in the house to do that. So, our fiscal crew, along with the budget things that Jacqueline has her crew prepare, they also are gracious enough to take a lot of time to help us put these expenditures in place and make sure our numbers are correct. Because Tim and I, well, Tim's a numbers person, I am not so much. So, they, big thanks to them. Tim's data crew is running data all the time. Again, something I don't do well, but he and his crew do. And I really want to make sure that we acknowledge those folks, some of who are in the house. Also, our families and students, particularly our students. We get great input from them. And staff as well, and proofreaders. We are not perfect. I'm sure there is one thing still in there to be corrected, if not more. But we do have some really smart English folks that proofread a lot of the narrative pieces. And I'm grateful for that. So, they know who they are.
Well, you know, we should give it to, like, high school kids. It's like a class exercise to read through the LCAP and make suggestions on it.
I could make a lesson plan. I could. One more thing, we work with our county office of education, Butte County Office of Education, specifically the lead there, Jeanette Spencer. She gives us all the latest and greatest pieces of information we need to include and tells us if we are off the mark, which has happened, and we get back on the mark. But we appreciate her support. She's a good friend to us here in Chico Unified. And that's it. If there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, we'll be back in a couple of weeks.
I have three.
Sure.
My first question is just so that we are all aware. When we go to the chicousd.edu When we go to the chicousd.org website, starting tomorrow, I'm envisioning, because this is what happens usually, that we'll have, the first thing you see is it's going to be a pop-up that says, "Comment on the LCAP." Because usually, we get some kind of fun pop-up when we have something special going on. So I don't know if that's really what's going to happen yet, but I know that that sometimes is usually what it is. There's usually a pretty easy way to get to what we're asking for. And then this, it's kind of, that was kind of a question, like, confirmation or not? The second question is, if there's a place that we can be directed to, if there's like a consolidated set of notes or kind of general outcomes from the community meetings and the student meetings, so that we can see, like, the general themes that came out of that?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Bullet point lists of just comments that were received during those meetings?
If you, if anybody wants to look for that, we certainly have that in here. Sift through, there's a section on engaging educational partners. And it would be listed in, within that section, lots of, lots of input and meeting dates and pieces to peruse. They're interesting, yeah.
It's consolidated and they're not scattered throughout.
It is. No, it's consolidated and organized according to meetings and groups. And I think it's pretty easy for folks to look through.
My first read-through of these, just so you know, are usually just looking at numbers.
Yeah, no, I, it's overwhelming.
You start to digest it.
It's overwhelming without a doubt.
Yeah. Speaking of numbers, the third question I have is a little bit for clarification and just a little bit of, like, just forward thinking in the future. Sorry, my nose got stuffed up in here all of a sudden.
That's okay, I've got flies over here, so I'm not sure what's happening.
Now, all of a sudden, my nose is stuffy. Allergies have been horrible this year. So if I mathed it right, the, one of the first slides broke down, like, our total unrestricted-restricted budget and then the LCAP budget. And it was about 8.575% is the LCAP budget of our, of our complete overall budget. But we really usually convey that our LCAP is our strategic plan, which is true, especially when it comes to student success. So I don't want to, like, downplay that at all, but I think it's, it's, I think it would be good to acknowledge somehow, somewhere, I know we do it in the budget breakdown, so I'm not, I'm not trying to take that away, anything away from that. But, you know, how, how the unrestricted-restricted budget meets all of the district's goals beyond what's in the LCAP. I know that we also have a facilities master plan and, and, you know, that, that side of things. And I just, my question is, is there a way to kind of frame that so that the public looks at this and says, okay, great, $18.6 million here, but what about the other, you know, 91% of the overall district budget?
Right, and I'm kind of looking at Jaclyn with that, because I, it, I'm not sure how in-depth it you want to talk about in your budget report.
There's a lot of energy that goes into this every year, which is great, and we need it. And it does, it's, it's exactly what we're supposed to do with this first, for the state. But, you know, you, you know what I'm trying to ask?
I think so.
Okay.
So I think the key piece here is the $18.5 million, almost $19 million, is supplemental money, right? So that's money that comes in from the state that has to be used for services above and beyond your core program. So within the 200-plus million dollars that's in the budget in entirety, that includes every kindergarten teacher and first grade teacher and English teacher at the secondary level, right? So that's your core program. So what this 19, almost 19 million focuses on are supplemental services to achieve these very overarching goals. If we didn't have that core program, then we wouldn't be successful with supplemental programs. So I think that's really the piece, is understanding that most of that 200 million, I mean, we're a people business, right? 90, you'll see it in the presentation, 90% of it is when salaries and benefits. So it's just having those people in the classrooms, but not only in the classrooms, but cleaning facilities like this, right? And people out on yard duty, and that's really kind of the core program, I guess, is really what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it's super transparent for the public. So what the LCAP is, or what the Local Control Funding Formula does for us, it was a shift from the state a decade ago, that, and I'm, I'm actually repeating this back just to make sure I understand clearly, and I can say it to other people, that we have our core program that is funded through the ways that we're funded, that Jaclyn's mentioning, you know, the bulk of the 200 million dollars. And then the state says, here's this amount of money that you have control to determine how you're going to allocate it to supplement your core program, but you have to meet these goals with this funding. Is that generally a good summary of what LCAP and LCFF is attempting to accomplish?
Yeah, and those goals are those priorities, those eight priorities, yeah. I like how you phrase them.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure. Okay, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you for all your work. It's a lot, it's a lot between the just data gathering and crunching and the presentation, so much appreciated.
Thank you.
This is informational only, however, it is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing and see if we have any public comments at this time on the LCAP. I now call the public hearing for the 2425 Draft Local Control Accountability Plan LCAP open. Do we have any public comment on the LCAP at this time? We did not have a sign-up, but hearing none from the audience. I will close the hearing. And as this is not an action item, there's no further discussion needed at this time, and we will see this item back for action in two weeks. Moving on to business services, item 8.2.1 is a discussion-action item for Resolution 1650-24, committing fund balances, fund balances, or fun balances, it's fine.
It can be fun, but... For some of us. So before you this evening is a resolution to commit fund balance. So fund balance essentially is the district's reserves or savings account. So there's multiple ways in which we designate those dollars. They can be locally designated or assigned, we can commit them through board action. We do have some that are non-spendable, which is basically inventory. So this evening, coming forward, in an effort to recognize that we have reserves and to earmark $2 million for electric vehicle infrastructure, there's currently statute coming down the pike, actually has already been approved, that will be showing up in 2027 and 2035 related to zero emission vehicles. So getting some money set aside to deal with the infrastructure on that. And then an additional $5 million for safety repairs related to anything for student and staff safety at our district. Any questions?
Just for clarification, so this is, this is a point where, is this where there's so much in our reserves that we need to allocate it to follow-of-gas state guards?
Yes.
Okay. And then ed services or the district staff determined that safety repairs at $5 million and electric vehicle infrastructure at $2 million was priority for those $7 million that need to be...
Right, so what we try to do is, because it's reserves or your savings account, we try to mirror it up with one-time expenditures, so that we're not taking one-time money that's sitting in our reserves and committing it for ongoing expenditures. And so that's why these two areas have been identified.
Gotcha. And this could be, this could be allocated in, in other ways as well? I mean, if we wanted to do, like, a one-time bonus for staff, for example, or, you know, if there was other priorities that the board determined, we could, we could discuss that?
Absolutely. So when the board takes action to commit the funds, they are to be spent for that reason and that reason only. However, at any given point, the board can come back and change that or commit additional funds at any point.
Okay, got it. And is there a deadline that this has to be done by?
So the committing of these funds has to be done with our budget related to the June 30th adoption for implementation July 1.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. And the safety repairs, is that a lot of what we had already identified before when we were talking about facilities updates at all? Or are those new, new needs that we haven't necessarily talked about?
Could be TBD, things that arise. The other piece is, should the bond not pass in November? Assuming the board takes action this evening, then there is a designated pot of money. I know that $5 million isn't going to modernize a new school, but if we have immediate safety needs for our students and staff at a school site, then we could access those funds.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions of clarification from the board?
No.
Are you recommending we, we allocate this money?
Yes.
I'm ready to move on.
And I don't have any sign-ups for public comment at this time. So if there are none that jump up out of their seats now, we can move on to a board motion.
I move we approve a resolution on establishing committed fund balances, number 1650-24.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Do we have any further points for discussion? Alrighty. Our last vote was unanimous, so we can just do a voice vote. All those in favor, please approve by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, is approved unanimously. Thank you. 8.2.2 is a public hearing, just making sure the last one wasn't supposed to be a hearing. Okay, public hearing or informational, informational-only item for the 2425 original budget.
All right, so we've got Marie Hartman, Shari Spronley, and myself. We're going to all kind of take some slides and go over the 2425 original budget that would be going place July 1st.
Yeah. Hello, board. We are here to present 2425 original budget. Like we said, this is informational only and will be brought back for approval on June 26. Okay, so typical budget development timeline, and we are on a typical budget year. In January, the governor provides the budget proposal for next fiscal year. Jaclyn gave some information about that at a previous board meeting. April 15th was the tax deadline. So then in May, the governor has the information about tax revenues and provides the May revised budget. So right now, we're in the negotiations period, where the negotiations are taking place between the legislature and the governor. June 15th, in a few days, is the constitutional deadline for the legislature to approve the budget. And then between June 15th and June 30th, the governor might approve it, he might line item veto, or he might send it back. All right, in our budget, the major assumptions we're going with, the LCFF funding formula is based on the May revise with the COLA of 1.07%. The funded ADA will be based on increased enrollment. Unduplicated students identified in targeted subgroups is 54.94%. Salaries and benefits reflect position control as of May 2nd, and it includes restricted state and federal funding and grants. Okay, so you guys are used to seeing this slide, and you see it all the time. This is our average daily attendance, that's where we get our money for our LCFF formula. This time, things to note, if you recall, in the past few years, we've utilized the three-year averaging method, because that's been more favorable for our district. The good news is that now we have been increasing enrollment, so we're actually going on current-year ADA. And that's good news, because as a school district, we always want to increase enrollment, increase ADA. So, let's see, we're kind, we've just kind of tipped that scale, so now we're using the current year. Our attendance percentage is pretty much holding steady at 94%. I know Erica and our sites have been doing a lot of attendance work to try to get that number back up. So that's been good. All right, this slide is unduplicated pupil percentage. Unduplicated pupils are free reduced-price meal-eligible, English learners, and foster youth. In '21 and '22, '22, '23, if you look at the numbers on the bottom, we kind of had a dip in that percentage, or not a dip, sorry, an increase in that percentage. And that brought us over that 55% sweet spot, which is where we get concentration funding. You can see '23, '24, and '24, '25 projected, we're going back down to where we were before. So that tickles down, our projection for '24, '25 is 54.94% three-year average, which is, that will make us ineligible for concentration funding. And the concentration funding we received before was 642,000 in '22, '23, and 1.5 in '23, '24. So, yeah, that's just, that's just the reality of where we are as far as that unduplicated count.
Okay, good evening, board. Okay, so what you have in front of you is our general fund income statement. This lists out our unrestricted funding, which is mostly our Local Control Funding Formula. And as Marie stated, our ADA and our unduplicated are what drives the amount of money that we receive from Local Control Funding Formula. I'm just going to say LCFF, because it's easier. And then on the restricted side, that's grants that we receive. And at the bottom line down there, when you see the change in fund balance, we have about a $1 million deficit that we're projecting at this point. And on a budget our size, that's about break even, is what we consider that. And we did a lot of work this last year, worked with ed services, worked with the board to try and get ourselves to a better spot. So that's looking much better than our projections that we had with our multi-year in the last few months. The restricted looks way worse, but just so you guys know, that's self-balancing funding, so those are grants. Usually, it's we receive revenue in a prior year, and then we're spending the grants down in the future years. Okay, so this shows our revenue that we receive on the unrestricted side. And as you can see, 95% of that comes from Local Control Funding Formula. The, the small amounts that we receive on the state revenue side, that's transportation, home-to-school transportation funding that we receive now. And then local revenue, that's anything from interest, facilities use funding that we receive, and then transportation fees that we collect as well, and other local funds. Okay, so this shows our unrestricted expenses. As Jaclyn mentioned, we are in the people business. And that number down at the bottom shows all of the green categories totaled together. So 90% of our unrestricted expenditures are people. And the reason we include special ed contribution is because a lot of that is staffing. So that number, the 90%, is actually up from prior years by about 2%. Our historical average has been about 88%. Okay, and then as Tim and Tina mentioned, we have our LCAP, which is another large funding source. We have a lot of planning that goes into how are we going to spend these funds? And that is the supplemental dollars that we receive from the LCFF. So this just breaks down all the staff and expenditures that we have in the LCAP in a summarized version, but same information that you received in the LCAP presentation. Okay, and then my last slide here is the other financing sources. So we have transfers in from other funds. One of those is our redevelopment agency pasture revenues that helps run our RMA, or routine restricted maintenance account. So that's our maintenance and operations, there's a lot of different titles they go by, but that's about $3.7 million. And then we also project 3% of developer fee admin support, so that's 3% of the, of the total fees that we plan to collect next year. And then on the contribution side to restricted programs, it's about $25 million for the contribution only for special ed. And then RMA, or routine restricted maintenance account, is going to be about $6.2 million, and that's 3% of our general fund expenditures. Okay, and I'm going to hand it over to Jaclyn.
Thank you. So the other piece that we look at is not only the budget for '24, '25, but we want to look at a planning tool for the two out-years, right? So '25, '26, and '26, '27. So on the screen ahead of you are all the assumptions. I'm going to go over a couple of key assumptions that we're looking at. As alluded to before, our enrollment is slightly increasing, which is great. So if we can get our attendance percentage up as well, those are extra dollars for the district. Right now, we're looking at '25, '26 up like 2 ADA, basically flat. Our cohorts coming in are pretty equivalent to the cohorts graduating. But we are seeing an uptick right now in '26, '27, so that's encouraging. Right now, the COLA estimates are 2.93% and 3.08%. That's the best information we have right now. Those will change, right? That's the information we have now, and as we get closer to those years, then those will be more defined. The other piece is, we're anticipating in '25, '26... The other piece is, we're anticipating in '25, '26, one more TK class at this point, and then that will be full implementation of the transitional kindergarten program. And at that point, current statute shows that we would go from a 12 to 1 ratio down to a 10 to 1 ratio. And as a result, that would be additional classrooms, teachers, as well as the aides in order to accommodate. For example, there's about 15 TK classes right now, and so if you change it from 24 students down to 20, that's four students per class, so you've got 60 students now that need homes. So we would need to add an additional three classes just to service the students that we already have right now.
Can you remind me, was that already known when we did the facilities master plan update?
Yes.
Okay, so that was incorporated into that?
Yeah, we're actually working on three TK complexes right now.
I'm like, in timeline-wise in my brain, I'm like, ah, so, okay.
Yes, Julie Kissel is all over it.
Thank you.
So this is what that multi-year projection looks like. So I would focus on the fourth line from the bottom there that talks about the increase or decrease. And so that really tells you, are you spending more than you're bringing in, or are you putting money into reserves? So you can see the $1 million in '24, '25 for the deficit, and then small deficits in the out-years. And this is why it's a planning tool, because we can look at this and make adjustments. And we also have very, very healthy reserves to be able to take the time to be methodical about those choices in the direction we want the district to go, looking for the board to lead on that.
Jaclyn, is this the first time in the last few years, there's two flies now, oh my goodness. Is this, is it, back over there. Is this the first time in the last few years that we've seen a projected deficit in that net increase-decrease line? Or have we, have we been, I'm sorry?
Kind of ebbs and flows, depending on, like, the last several years, it's been positive because we've had a lot of COVID relief money.
I think maybe I should have meant in my time, like in the last few years.
In your time, yes. I would say it's primarily been positive because we've had a lot of COVID relief funding that we've been able to utilize. You always wanna use your restricted dollars first, and then save your unrestricted for later, essentially.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Could I stop you right there? We're a slide off of where my question is, but on the encroachment from special ed, that's at, where was that number?
25.3 million.
Yeah, that.
Yes.
Has, it's gone up. Can you give us a rough, give us, give me just kind of a, what have the numbers looked like over the last three, last three years?
Do you have this?
So from estimated actuals for the ending of this year, the increase year-over-year is about 3.5 million. To go back in prior years, I'd have to look at our numbers, yeah.
That was-
But that's the increase year-over-year from this year that we're currently in that'll end on June 30th.
That was what I needed.
Into '24, '25.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We are seeing an increase in enrollment with students with IEPs, so, associated dollars. The last piece here, I really wanna speak to is cash flow. So we bring it every time, we say yay, cash is king, but I think this is gonna be really pivotal going into the state budget for '24, '25. So as always, I wanna point out that in December and April, you'll see, you'll see spikes to our cash, and that's because of property taxes that are allocated to the school district. The big piece that I wanna point out here is one of the proposals in the '24, '25 state budget is called a cash deferral. And so what the state is proposing is that the paycheck that we normally get on June 30th from the state, they'll just push it a couple days and pay us in July, and they count that as a cut from the state level. So what that means internally is we still have to pay our employees, you know, their June 30th paycheck, but we're gonna be paid, let's say, a week later. So we really have to manage cash. Our May payroll alone was just over $14 million. So while this cash here is very large, and we're sitting on that, you know, when we start talking about cash deferrals at the state level, and if they want to defer multiple months, sorry, cash, that starts to build when you're talking about 14, 15 million dollars a month in payroll. But right now, should that proposal go through at the state level, we can certainly weather, weather the storm on a June cash deferral into July. So here's where we're at now. We will absolutely get a budget by June 30th, and that's because paychecks for the legislature are dependent upon it. So it will happen. Will it be the budget that's enacted? No. So they're talking about trailer bill language coming out in August and September, so there'll be some sort of agreement that gets a budget passed, and then the state legislature will go on recess. They will come back, and then they will basically do trailer bill language to clean up what they really want enacted. Cash deferrals are something they're talking about. From a state budget perspective, K-12 education looks pretty good compared to other sectors. We're hoping that continues when the actual state budget is finalized. So knowing that, I most likely will be back in August with some highlights of what changes were made and how that would impact Chico Unified. But that's really the big uncertainty going forward for Chico Unified is the state budget and the cash deferrals. Is there any additional questions, follow-up questions?
I have a question about the slide five, the unduplicated pupil percentage. Seeing that we dipped back, well, the projection is that we're dipping back below the 55% threshold.
Correct.
Two kinda questions. One is, are there, is there any circumstance that that might bump up by that 0.06%?
Absolutely.
And, and when would we know that?
Okay.
And then a follow-up question is, how would that impact the projected budget?
So I'm glad you came back to this. So that 54.94% is what generates that almost $19 million. Direct correlation. So the state essentially says, run a core program assuming all students are the same. All students are not the same, right? So the students who are deemed unduplicated, right, so only counting once, for the free and reduced homeless and English language learners, we are given additional resources to support them supplemental to achieve those goals. So as that percentage increases, we get more funding, and then that 55% threshold is really the magic number because you get incrementally more money when you're over that 55%. So this is an estimate at this point. Right now, we will know officially what that percentage is. The first preliminary number will be in December, and it's finalized through an amendment window in January. And it's all based off of the census day, which is the first Wednesday of October.
And to, to establish that unduplicated status, like for free and reduced lunches, that still pretty solely self-reporting, or are all of our sites pretty good about getting that data from each of our families?
So ironically enough that you bring that up, next year, Chico Unified district-wide will be CEP eligible, which is community eligibility provision. So Chico Unified will not be collecting free and reduced applications. So we will be using an alternative income form through ARES registration. So every parent guardian that registers their child will be asked a couple of questions, number of people in their family, monthly income, and then based on those elements, then behind the scenes, it will dictate whether or not they're in the free category, reduced, or paid. So that's how we will be receiving the information starting in '24, '25.
And so that will end up being reflected when, with that new census-
Correct.
-date in October and the update in December.
So for any student who's enrolled that first Wednesday in October, their associated alternative income form would be tied to them, and that's how we would get that percentage.
So that projected number could change actually pretty drastically, not very drastically, but it could change relatively significantly because we're having, we have a, we're gonna have a different-
Different process.
Yeah, different process.
Correct.
Okay. It'll be interesting to see how that, that rolls out.
So we are, and I admit, we are being conservative here because we don't wanna overallocate dollars-
That's fair.
And then have to cut back. I'm optimistic with the alternative income form that we will see that percentage increase.
I don't see any further questions. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments on the original budget for '24, '25. We had nobody sign up ahead of time. Not seeing anybody raise their hand from the crowd, so I will close the hearing. It is informational only. Does this, this'll come back to us?
The budget works in tandem with the LCAP, so we will be back on June 26.
26. Perfect, thank you. Moving on to 8.2.3, public hearing, informational on the 2425 education protection account, the EPA.
Yes, so the Educational Protection Act was a change to the state constitution back in 2012 related to Prop 30. It essentially is a carve-out of our local control funding formula. It's not any new money that must be sentenced in particular ways. So Chico Unified, we use this $27 million for teacher salaries. They are the teachers in the classrooms. It's not administrative, which is important, and so we put that first $27 million towards teacher salaries in the classroom. But again, it's not any new money, it's just a carve-out of our existing local control funding formula. So we do have to disclose, and that's the attachment there, the spending plan that does say we use it for instruction, which is teacher salaries.
Great. I am not seeing any questions from the board at this time. This is also a public hearing, so I will open it and ask if we have any public comment on this item. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the hearing and state that it is, again, informational. It will come back also at the next meeting in two weeks for approval. 8.2.4 is a public hearing and information. This is a lot of signatures, you guys. Informational item on the 2425 original budget reserves disclosure.
Yes, so the last public hearing related to the 2425 budget is our reserve disclosure. So according to the state of California, a school district our size, the minimum reserve we have is 3%, which for, for a budget our size for '24, '25 puts us at about $6.5 million. Again, one payroll is over $14 million. So we do have additional reserves, and these are listed on the budget attachment here and the description of what they are. The board has taken action to do an additional 2% and set aside some one-time money from 1819. We do have some technology, E-rate carryover, which is federal dollars, but largely, we really just need the reserves for cash flow and the budget uncertainty, which hopefully we'll know more in August when, when I come back, to be able to weather any storm that may be basically brewing at the state level.
Jaclyn, is this tied to the, you can't have more than X dollars, or the state can take it away?
Not this particular component. The very first agenda item I did, the committed fund balance, that's related to the statute you're referring to.
Okay.
That was related to my question. Sorry, I was not expecting that. With the $7 million that we just approved, that's separate from, from this?
That is separate from this.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
So I do wanna point out, basically, there's $14 million here to substantiate, and that's one month of payroll, which I think is very prudent for a district our size.
Okay, seeing no further questions for clarification, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody? No? Alright, I'll close it. And we will move right on along. This is informational, and we'll come back at the next meeting. 8.2.5 is a discussion action item on the facilities bond charter school allocation.
Yes, so we're moving away from original budget, and now we're talking about potential bond allocation. So for, for the last six or eight months, Chico Unified administration, along with two board liaisons, board member Dalby and board member Robinson, have been meeting with our charter community to talk about what the charter allocation would look like in a potential bond measure. So after those meetings, we finally were able to come to unanimous agreement that of the $239 million, 15.45% would be allocated for the charter schools. And of those dollars, essentially how it would work is $10 million would come off the top to fund the remaining portion of Inspire's project to move to Fremont Street. Then of those remaining dollars, 35% would be allocated to every charter school except Inspire, leaving the remaining 17.5 million available for all charter schools for large meaningful projects for, for them to implement on their facilities and use to improve their facilities.
Can we pull that up on the big screen, please? I tried to swallow my cookie while I was talking. It didn't go well. I would not recommend it. So just for clarification, the, the other topic tonight that we'll be discussing is if we approve the bond measure for November or not. And so that reflects the $239 million that is on that, which we saw-
That's a correct statement.
Yes, and we were presented that last meeting, and then tonight is the night that we, we decided we're gonna move forward with that. And then the breakdown is Chico Unified bond dollars, if that were to be approved by the voters, and then the allocation to the charter schools, and this, this plan that we all negotiated together with multiple meetings that were very informative, and I think built good relationships as well, at least for me. The, the guarantee to fund Inspire as long as the voters approve this bond measure was a topic that came out of those discussions, and that was something that was really important, I know, to this board, and that was where these discussions kind of were launched, was, was our ask to engage with the charters and try to really work through a plan to ensure that there was a path forward to fund Inspire and ensure that each charter school was still receiving a, a good amount of money to improve their current facilities and/or put towards new facilities, and an additional approach to an equitable way to allocate those funds. And this is the plan that we came up with. I don't have any further questions, and I don't know if other board members have dissected this a lot, but I haven't heard any other questions either from the board members. And I don't think there's been any pushback, any, you know, with the charter schools, everybody seems really happy with this plan moving forward, so, yeah. Thanks for bringing this tonight. So seeing no other comments or questions for clarification from board members, I would like to move forward with public comment. And we do have one sign up right now, which is Becky Brown, so I would like to invite Becky to speak, please. Sorry, Becky, I'm just gonna give my spiel, because I know you know the rules, but just for everybody else to know, it's a three-minute limit on public comment, and there will be a warning signal at 30 seconds, just to let you know that your time remaining is, is almost up. Yeah, that's, it's a new fun feature.
Good evening, Chico Unified Board. Becky Brown, Principal Superintendent of Inspire School of Arts and Sciences, and I am so pleased to be here tonight on behalf of my school community with a message of deep gratitude for district leadership and for this board. In the past year, we have approached you to ask for your help in accessing funding to close the $10 million shortfall for our new campus project on Fremont Street. Since then, the facilities committee has brought Inspire and the other charters to the table, as you said, in the spirit of collective problem solving. The bond charter allocation plan you are considering tonight is a solution to provide adequate facilities for Inspire students. It takes us off the Chico High campus so their expansion can move forward. It guarantees funding for each of the charters and puts an assessment process in place, just like the districts, that would prioritize the need of students for this from opportunity. Superintendent Staley, I am so grateful to you for your wise leadership, to your brilliant team, to Julie and Jaclyn, and to Tina for your support. I'm extremely grateful to Board President Dalby for your focus on equity and your solutions-based approach in these conversations. And my school community will be all in, will be helping to pass this bond, will be getting our Chico community excited about the possibilities for charter and district students and schools, and about what this will mean for all of us. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Do we have any other folks who would like to approach the podium and give a public comment? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to action. I would like to make a motion that this board approve the facilities bond charter school allocation in the event that we decide tonight to move forward with the November election bond measure for Chico Unified School District and its charter partners.
I'll second that.
Fantastic. We have been unanimous. I feel like we can continue with- We have been unanimous. I feel like we can continue with that theme. So for all of those in favor of this item, please signify by saying yes or aye.
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 Tennis not voting.
Okay, so we have four ayes and one abstain, and so the motion passes. Thank you. With that, we can move forward to, excuse me, eight point two point six, Discussion Action Resolution 1651-24, School Facilities General Obligation Bond Election, November 5, 2024.
Yes, I'm very excited to bring this forth officially to the board. It did come about a month ago at our May meeting. I haven't received any suggested changes to the language. So the language is as presented at the May meeting. And I just want to remind the community and our board that this starts with our facility master plan. This board approved a revision of the facility master plan in September of '23, and that's really our roadmap. That's our roadmap of how are we going to address our facilities. The board took action as far as prioritizing schools, not easy. I certainly appreciate the effort on that. But what it did tell us is we have over a billion dollars' worth of need related to our facilities, and one bond is not going to cover all of that need. And that's why we're asking our gracious community to approve another bond on the election ballot in November. So I've asked Julie to put together a little history on our bond and what we've done with our dollars so that people understand what we've done and how we've been good stewards of our taxpayer dollars, and then look for this board to put on the November election another bond measure for 239 million.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. My heart is racing. It's an exciting presentation to give you all. Looking back on the history since 2012, we've come a long way. So back in 1988, as far as back as I could find, our first bond measure that the district passed. This slide shows you that, again, in 1998, we passed another bond, Measure A, for 14.7 million. And then in 2012, Measure E, 2016 with Measure K, and then looking towards the future. That's a total of $278.7 million that our community has allowed us to spend on some desperately needed projects. The 1988 bond paid for projects that were really needed because of enrollment growth, really big enrollment growth. So we built Little Chico Creek and Emma Wilson and Forest Ranch Charter School. And we also purchased the land for Marsh Junior High. And it also enabled us to go in and do some really badly needed modernization in our elementary schools and junior high schools at the time. That was a long time ago. Moving on to the 1998 bond, which was Measure A. So Measure A was brought forward to build a new high school out at the Canyon View property, which actually ended up being purchased for the high school, which the district still owns today. The process to purchase a property and get it approved by the state is really, really hard and really, really long. So by the time the district had purchased the land, done the environmental impact reports, taken care of the regulatory process, enrollment in the district had plummeted. In fact, the enrollment in the whole state of California public schools had plummeted. And the district was really put in a position of not needing to have three comprehensive high schools. And we had to decide, were we going to close one and build new? Or were we going to reallocate those funds toward the comprehensive high schools? It took a long time for that decision to be made, 10 years, almost. And then we got started. Board gave direction to utilize that $48.7 million on the existing comprehensive high schools. So we knuckled down, met with the school administrators and the communities of the high schools, and developed some really big projects there. We were able to build the Center for the Arts. That was the very first one. I came on board as they poured the foundation. So that was really exciting time for me to come to the district, working under Mike Weis and Born. It was wonderful. Then we hopped over to Chico High School, and we built the new two-story classroom building over there. Then we went to Fairview High School and built their construction academy. And then back to PV, we're kind of doing little projects at each school to spread the wealth around, where we built the Yale Hall, the two-story classroom building at Pleasant Valley High School. Back over to Chico High for some revisions to the Chico High Williams Theater. That was one of our first career and technical education grant projects, where we were able to leverage those bond dollars with state money for arts, media, and entertainment career. And added a restroom at the Chico High Field at that time. It was just a field. And a few projects at Inspire School of Arts and Sciences on the Chico High campus, where we added laboratories, robotics, arts department, big modular buildings for those functions to occur. And then back over to Pleasant Valley High School for career and technical education, as well as Chico High for career and tech, doing additions to their welding and woodshop buildings.
Sorry, Julie, what was the timeframe that those projects rolled out? Was it like over 10 years or?
I would say it started in about 2009, and they were completed by Yale was done in 2014. So it was a pretty small amount of time.
Okay, but the bond measure was in '98?
Yeah, yes. It took 10 years to decide what to do with those dollars that the community provided to us. When we didn't have the need for that high school anymore, what were we going to do? So we do have the land over at Canyon View. It is approved by the state. It's met all of the regulatory requirements, and the district can build there in the future. But it is not needed, as far as our enrollment projections show, for quite some time, even though we are growing still, which is great. Moving on to Measure E. Measure E passed in 2012, and it was actually a tax extension, not a brand-new bond measure. It had been a long time before we had spent dollars on really nuts-and-bolts kinds of projects. So we started with what we called quick starts. So we focused on safety and security, a lot of fencing, security cameras, emergency repairs to roofs and overhangs that were rotted out, exterior lighting to light up the outside of our schools, wayfinding signage to let people know how to get to the main office, how to get to different buildings on our campuses, where they need to check in when they're visitors, and a lot of big technology, cabling for all of our schools to bring them up to... How many gig, John?
So one gig in classroom and 10 gigs.
One gig and 10 gigs. We're way, way ahead of the game in the state of California, getting that kind of cabling into our classrooms, which has helped us to be able to add to the experience of the students so much. And we're so grateful for the ability to do that. The rollout of all the fuseonic, you know, television screens, interactive computer screens in each classroom was part of that, which was huge addition to our classrooms. We also were able to jump into the junior highs. We had just recently, this board, this board, not you guys, but Eileen was here, decided to send our sixth graders to the junior highs. So then our junior highs needed some immediate attention with modernization, the addition of science classrooms and science technology. So that was a big, big part of Measure E.
I was in Marsh for four years in the older part, and then got to spend four years in the new science building. So I was pretty happy with that project.
I'll bet.
Yeah, it was nice.
So this slide just reviewing, talking about the safety and security improvements that were enabled with Measure E. The junior high projects, we have some photographs here. Bidwell Junior High, we modernized their science facilities, but most of the work went into their administrative offices. It was very, very congested, and we worked on that really hard. We also redid the inside of their multipurpose and added air conditioning to their gymnasium. So it was huge improvements at Bidwell. And it seemed so long ago, but when you drive by, it still looks really nice and fresh, you know, for people arriving on campus. At Marsh Junior High, we added the science building and multipurpose building. Before we got there, the students were eating out of a portable building. They had always dined in a portable building on campus. The roof leaked, the air conditioning and heating didn't work well. And then we had the opportunity to replace that with a permanent building that was part of the overall Marsh master plan. So we're working our way through this master plan. Chico Junior High got badly needed modernization of their student restrooms in the main corridor, staff restrooms and special needs restrooms, as well as a new science building, and upgraded their existing science as well, as well as adding a STEM space, which was and is still a really big asset over at Chico Junior. So then we're moving on to Measure K, getting closer to current time here. $152 million. It was passed in 2016. At that time, 15.34% of those Measure K bonds were allocated to charter schools. So this was, we were one of the first districts in the state that allocated a portion of our local general obligation bond dollars to charters. And it has really helped to improve charter facilities in our area.
Julie, sorry, at the time in 2016, when the district did that, it was one of the first to do that. But isn't it still one of the only, like, there's not very many districts in all of California that have done that in this time, right?
Correct, correct. I have Googled it. I come up with five districts that have done it now. It's catching on. They're all our kids. So we really need to take care of facilities for everyone.
Yeah, and just to reclarify, the 15.34% was based on the percentage of overall enrollment within school district boundaries that were going to a charter school within those boundaries.
That's correct. So the enrollment of in-district charter school students at that point in time was 15.34%. And the charters that were in existence in the district at the time are the ones that benefited from Measure K.
And then what we just passed was a similar percentage breakdown based on the same criteria?
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, because we're way ahead of the game. We were very much newbies to this allocation of dollars to charter schools at the time. So how they were allocated was not determined until after the bond passed last time. So now we've learned, I think we did a really good job, but there are definitely lessons learned about how the dollars were allocated and how we might do a better job this time. So those meetings that we had with the charter community and our district facilities team really, really benefited, and I'm pretty proud of where we ended up. Moving on to the remaining projects here for Measure K. We're moving into Phase Three of our master plan at this point. And we worked at Marigold and Loma Vista, Shasta, Neale Dow, Pleasant Valley High School, and Chico High School stadiums. Have some pictures for you to show you. And then we moved on to Phase Four after that. So we've been working our way through. Phase One was those quick starts. Phase Two was the junior highs. Phase Three, we're heading into the elementary schools. Phase Four, we're continuing with the elementary schools. Some photos I can show you here, the building we're in right now for Marigold Elementary School, Loma Vista next door. At first, Loma Vista, we were going to modernize their existing building. When we had an ADA inspector come out and measure everything in the building and tell us everything that we were going to have to do, it made a lot more sense to tear down that old building. It was the worst condition in the whole district, and build one new building that really met the needs of the students that were going there. It was a very exciting project, still one of my favorite projects that I've ever worked on here. And then moved over to Shasta Elementary School. We added the kindergarten complex and two new classroom wings and the administration. We also did some minor sprucing up of their existing classrooms. And got over to Neale Dow and totally transformed their campus and added a new multipurpose room for them as well. The high school stadiums, everybody in town goes there. Everybody in town sees them. Last week at graduation, under the lights, they're just dazzling. They meet the needs of our PE and our athletic community, and we're super proud of those. And can't say enough about that. Pleasant Valley High School, you heard a little bit about Priscilla Burns here, and I left you a little article on your desks up there that was written about her work on the Culinary Arts Program at Pleasant Valley High School. We have some photographs of the inside of the learning kitchen, the medical pathways, engineering, and the child development pathways that we're able to leverage our bond dollars with state career and technical education money. John Shepard played a huge role in this. I thank him. He had wild ideas of what we could get done, and I was scared to death. And I was really afraid to jump. And he's like, no, we can do this, Julie. We can do this. And we did, and it's just fabulous. And I'm really, really hoping as we move forward and we get to Chico High in the implementation plan, the state government will help us with career and technical education grants to do the same thing over there. We did work at Chico High in their agriculture and welding. We renovated their welding classrooms. We added a huge outdoor space where fabrication occurs and the big greenhouse over there. We also had quite a few charter school projects. You've seen me in front of you, bringing them forward every month or every other month. And two of them, we've highlighted here, that were larger projects. Our Chico Country Day School, adding the kindergarten and classrooms and a new administration to the campus. And then over at Nord Country School, they're extending their multipurpose room and putting in a large outdoor covered area for dining. So that was Phase Three we just finished with, and now we're moving into Phase Four. So Phase Four is pretty much now. We've been actively working over at McManus. You've all seen it. Welcome you to come by anytime you want to take a walkabout. Kelly got to go over there and see it midweek last week, and it is really coming along. The five new buildings will be, four of those will be open, ready to go by the end of this month. We're buying the furniture, moving all the boxes into the classrooms right now, started on Monday. And the weather is really cooperating. It's been really a treat to be moving boxes out there. But we're so thrilled to be able to move in. So now it starts the second phase of the project, where we're going to modernize all of their existing buildings. So while we're trying to move all these things, they're tearing apart the asphalt. They're tearing out all of the fixtures out of the bathrooms. So it's really pretty crazy over there right now. it, it's really pretty crazy over there right now. As soon as the students were gone, they got busy working. They've got a short amount of time while the students are gone to get this work done and they're, they're doing a fantastic job.
Julie, weren't the students gone just like four business days ago?
Yes. Yes. And if you, if you drove by, you wouldn't believe that they were just there four days ago. It's, it's a lot going on. It takes a lot of planning. It takes a lot of, you know, people working together in coordination to make those things happen. The staff at McManus has been so flexible and so patient. The construction company is doing a great job at scheduling everything and, and doing just a fine workmanship. So we're, we're very proud of how things are going. We're also working, since the board passed our update to the master plan and we have direction, we have selected the architects for these projects and we are actively working with staff and getting preliminary designs together for the modernization at Citrus Elementary School, transitional kindergarten, kindergarten additions, as we discussed earlier tonight, and restroom renovations on the schools that have not already received upgrades as part of these Measure K plans. I can't stress enough how important it is that we accentuate that these bond dollars are spent on safety and security projects. A lot has changed in our world recent years and Matt has talked to me a lot about, you know, safety on campuses and things he's seen around the world and how important it is that we keep our students and families safe. And we have done a lot, but there's a lot left to do. And some of it, we don't even know what we're gonna have to do yet. So we need to be ready and have the funding available to make necessary improvements for safety and security as our community needs it. Also, part of the phase four projects was modernization at PV High School, Chico High School and Fairview. Fairview High School, student restrooms were renovated. They look beautiful. The students are thrilled. I was there the day they opened the doors and there was a student standing there getting ready to walk in and he said, this is for us? Like, like he couldn't believe that we had renovated the bathrooms for him, for them, for the students. And so I was, that really just about made me cry. It was really, really something. A couple of pictures here of what McManus is looking like. We've been working with Citrus staff. It's looking like they, their priority is to modernize their building and to add some kindergarten, transitional kindergarten classrooms to the campus. So we're working on whether this works with our budget or not. We're not there, but these are conceptual plans. You can see, I'll point it out real quick. Those classrooms don't exist right now. Those are what we are looking at building there. So we would have additional play area for the littles as well. We're, we're actively working on transitional kindergarten at Emma Wilson, Little Chico Creek and Marigold. This is a picture of Marigold, has two classrooms outlined. That corner, it's the corner of East Avenue and Marigold right there. And an additional play area back behind where the tile wall is along East Avenue. Moving on to Little Chico Creek, an expansion of their parking lot, addition of two transitional kindergarten and one kindergarten classroom and a couple of other needed things on their campus, one being the single point of entry, safety and security project there. And then Emma Wilson just adding on to their existing kinder complex. We're also working on restroom renovations throughout the whole district. We're moving right along. We have scheduled meetings with the administrators from each school and the director of secondary and elementary education. Those will be happening before the end of June, so we can get some firm plans on the restroom renovations. So coming up, we have phase five we're looking at, working, working our way through that plan. As you all know, phase five includes Rosedale Chapman and Parkview Elementary School. You've seen these plans before, what's existing and what we plan to do. We are working on the selection of the architects for these projects and we should have those completed this summer and be on, well on our way to designs before the November election. Chapman, Parkview. We also have Inspire Arts and, School of Arts and Sciences, a shovel-ready project. It is approved through the state division of architect as well as the California Department of Education. PG&E and the city of Chico are out working on Bruce Road. They called me out there the other day because they're, they have to put the conduits in the road for Inspire. So we met with them and that will be happening this week for that future development. We're really excited about getting the opportunity to get in the road at this point because they're gonna have a moratorium where they will not allow you to cut into Bruce Road for, for quite some time. So here's where we're talking about the master plan. So we've, we've worked really hard at the district to create a workable plan with our community. We've, we've gotten feedback from our schools, from our parents, from our community members of what is important to do in our community for our schools. Dating all the way back to two thousand and thirteen, we developed this plan. We have modified it slightly over the years, but we have been working our way through. And I think it's very important to say that we're making good on our promises with what we have done with the bond dollars that they have allowed us to utilize. You can see the dotted line down the middle. That's where we are now. Projects moving forward will require a new bond. The total needs of the district, as mentioned earlier, are at just under a billion dollars with the assessments that occurred during the development of the master plan. It's reliant on general obligation bond in order for us to keep moving. And phase four will be completed with remaining Measure K, but moving forward with the Chapman, Rosedale, Parkview is going to reacquire a new bond. This sheet here talks about leveraging of funds. So I did a little bit of math because I was just curious. The pink number down at the bottom is the only one that you really need to look at. It's a hundred and twenty-one million dollars that we've got from the state of California through the state school facilities program. Total bond funds since nineteen eighty-eight, two hundred and seventy-eight point seven million dollars. We've been able to leverage those dollars and get an additional one hundred and twenty-one million dollars, an additional forty-three percent on our local funds. So we are going to continue to leverage local bond dollars. We're in line now for the projects we're doing and will continue to get in line in order to get those dollars reimbursed back to the district. That's allowed us to do four hundred million dollars worth of projects.
Can you say that again, just really quick? You're talking about match funding, basically, using bond dollars for match funding with state available, like grant monies?
Correct.
And so, and so we took the two million something, so I didn't write it down.
Two seventy-eight.
Yeah, bond dollars from the last few measures and we're able to extend that up to four million, four hundred million something because of the, the ability to leverage those bond dollars for those, those grants.
That's correct. With new construction funding, modernization funding and career and technical education. And that is the bond history. I'm sorry, it was lengthy, but there was a lot to talk about. Is there any questions?
Just wanna recap that again. That's almost, Jacqueline can correct my math, but it's almost like a two to one multiplier effect, right? For every two dollars from the bond measure, we get one dollar from the state. I mean, if we were to continue this.
Yeah, Julie alluded to it. Forty-three percent more money, right? Because we're able to, and this is all Julie and her team, really take those local bond dollars and leverage them and get in line with the state for reimbursement for projects we were already gonna do, right? Because of the voters and having faith in Chico Unified as being good stewards to put that money towards buildings to serve our kids.
Thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Right now, I don't see any further questions for clarification from board members. We're here. We're on item eight point two point six. We also don't have any pre-assigned public comment requests and I'm not seeing any hands going up for a public comment at this time. So we can go ahead and move forward for calling for a motion.
I will move approval of resolution sixteen fifty-one twenty-four. General obligation bond to be put on November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by member Lando and a second by member Robinson, opened up for discussion at this time, board. Seeing no further discussion, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. Oops, sorry. No. Did you wanna discuss? Yeah. I mean, I'll just take this opportunity to reiterate the importance of, of bond dollars to, to take advantage of monies that are available by the state and multiply those dollars to even bigger funds to be able to renew and reinvigorate our school facilities for Chico students, both in our traditional public CUSD schools and our charter schools. And I'm really proud to, to support this effort.
And on that, and the schools that are immediately targeted in phase five, Rosedale Chapman and Parkview, are all campuses that are what, between seventy and eighty years old?
They were built in fifty-three, I think.
Yeah. So, you know, this is not a frivolous spending of public money. This is campuses that were built for a different time and a different style of education. This money goes directly to preparing our students and educating them for the modern world. And in many cases, addressing serious safety and environmental needs of these sites as well.
Yeah, they're falling apart. I did want to, to mention and point people to the website too, because the facilities master plan is on the website and I've gone on and it's, it's pretty easy to flip through off the website. So if anybody's interested in reviewing Julie's presentation, it's all there.
Speaking of which, is, 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 I don't know if it's already there or is it possible to have Julie's presentation on the page alongside the facilities master plan? Because it is a really nice summary of the history of how bond dollars have facilitated our facilities improvements and expansions over the last few decades.
Yeah, it'll be added in the facility section.
Great. Thank you. It was a great presentation. Should even get it on video. Plaster's really up there. I'm seeing no further discussion or comments from board members. We can do a roll call vote. I'd like to vote first. So Dolby, aye.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Thomas, aye.
Concan, aye.
All right, it's unanimous. We're moving forward, you guys. Let's do this. Now the real work begins. All right. Thank you, everybody, for all of the hard work that went into, into the process to get us to this point. Now it's from here to November. Gotta do it. All right. It sounds like President Dolby's gonna pull a, a motion of personal privilege and call for a ten-minute break. So we'll do eleven-minute break and come back at eight twenty-five. So we'll do eleven-minute break and come back at eight twenty-five. Welcome back, uh, to the Chico Unified School Board meeting. We were just on break. Uh, we are still in our discussion action, action, or, uh, sorry, uh, items. Uh, we're on eight point two point seven. It's a discussion action item for charter schools, Measure K, projects requests.
Hi, uh, thank you again. Um, this item is regarding, uh, Nord Country School that you authorized a project for them to get rid of their portable ramps and pour, uh, concrete ramps in, um, which is an incredibly nice thing on their campus. They underspent, so this is just a true-up of funds. So they underspent by sixteen thousand dollars and they, um, this item is just to put that money back into their account of Measure K. Any questions on that?
I don't see any questions or hear any. Uh, and we have no public comment, so, um, I think we could just open this up for a motion.
I move approval.
I second. And, um, would it make sense to put something like that in the consent calendar in the future?
Yes.
I mean, somebody just wanting to give money back to their account. You know, I mean, I don't think anybody up here would possibly object to that.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
All righty, uh, last vote was unanimous, so, uh, we'll go for a voice vote again. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, it's unanimous and is approved. Thank you. Eight point two point eight is discussion action for resolution one six four nine dash two four, adopting procedures evaluating qualifications and proposals of lease leaseback contractors.
So, um, in our district, we use, uh, public contract code, low bid, low bid, um, contractors for almost all of our projects. Um, we used to use lease leaseback quite a bit in the past, and it's still in our toolbox of construction delivery methods. The laws have changed, so we needed to go back and revise the selection process for how we get those lease leaseback entities on board. So the information in front of you is the resolution, uh, for the board to approve the process. That is essentially required by statute. So it's exactly what is required by law for the selection of lease leaseback entities. And it also details the competitive bidding that must occur with the subcontractors for lease leaseback projects that didn't used to be in statute, but it now is. Um, with that, I'll turn it over for any questions that you might have.
This, this isn't the first time we've done this. After the statute changed, we did one revision so that we could go out to follow the law and get our lease leaseback contractors.
Yes, and things have changed over the years. Um, you, we ask for a statement of qualifications from qualified, uh, general contractors. We evaluate those. Now there's a scoring mechanism, a rubric that is provided. And then there's an interview process where there's also a scoring rubric provided. And it's a very transparent system, uh, for selection.
So is there a point where we either have to use the lowest bid process versus the lease leaseback process for selecting a contractor? Or is it just whichever we prefer?
It is up to us. There's a, a number of different construction delivery methods available to the district, and lease leaseback is just one of them.
All righty. So no further questions? Uh, and no public comment? I'll call for a motion.
I move approval of resolution number sixteen forty-nine dash twenty-four regarding selection of our lease leaseback contractors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous and passes. Thank you. Next, eight point three point one, discussion action on resolution one six five three dash two four, the elimination of classified staff due to lack of work or lack of funds.
All right, so I'm here to, um, to bring forth the resolution to eliminate three positions. Um, the, the instructional paraprofessional position at Nailed Down was never filled and no longer needed. It was an opportunity class, and that, that class is going away for next year. So, um, we want to eliminate that off the books. And then the two office assistant, um, positions are, they were promoted. Um, they got moved up, they got reclassified to, uh, uh, office assistant athletics. And so they are basically assistants to the, uh, the athletic directors at both high schools. And so because they have unique positions, um, they, they, their position changed to office assistant athletics, and these are the positions that they used to hold, um, office assistants. And so, um, we're eliminating them off the books.
Thanks for the explanation.
Yeah, no problem.
I, I don't see any further questions for clarification. Uh, and there was no public comment on this item, so I will call for a motion.
I move approval of, um, resolution one six five three dash two four, elimination of classified staff due to lack of work or lack of funds.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
It was, uh, it was, the motion was by Mr. Lando and the second was by, uh, oh, not Lando, sorry. Uh, member Tennis, and the second was by, uh, member Conken. She was first. Um, all right. No further discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous and it passes. Thank you. Next is eight point three point two, discussion action for resolution one six five four dash two four, elimination of classified staff due to lack of work or lack of funds. Uh, is that the same?
It is not, so.
But still classified.
Still classified.
That's why I got it. Sorry, okay.
Basically, this one came a little later, and so we went through the process in conjunction with the CSEA union, talked to them, and, um, moved this one forward. This is also an opportunity classroom, um, at Chapman, where the opportunity classroom no longer resides. So, um, we're just cleaning up that position also.
Okay, excuse me. Um, no public comment and, uh, call for a motion?
I move, um, passage of resolution one six five four dash two four, res, uh, elimination of classified staff due to lack of work or lack of funds.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by member Tennis and a second by member Lando. Um, I did miss in my notes that it was supposed to be a roll call vote in the last, the last, um, item, and on this item. Is that something that we need to go backwards on? Okay, okay.
We're not going to get sued if we do that, you don't think?
It is in bright red, bold, capital letters on my paper, which almost never happens. So I, I, I saw it, and then I remembered, and then I forgot, and then we did the thing, and then I saw it again. I went, oh, no. Uh, so we're going to just do it to follow the instructions that I was given by the powers that are smarter than me. So Dolby, aye.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Tennis, aye.
Conken, aye.
Okay, it passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whew, fun ones. Um, all right, we're on to, uh, four, under the, under board. Eight point four point one is a discussion action item for cellular devices policy update.
Thank you, board. I'll, I'll, I'll kick off the first couple. If we could, uh, move to the second. I don't have a clicker, so you can just go to the next slide. That would be great. All right, and so I'm, we were, um, here on May first. Um, the educational team did a presentation on cell phone, what our, our current board policy is and see if we needed to make any changes or what the direction of the board, um, was an informational item at the time. Um, following the presentation, the board voted to place an item on the June twelfth board agenda that would include input from staff, students and families as well, propose potential revisions to an existing board policy. Um, so we're, um, going to be bringing that information to you. So right now, Tim and, uh, Pedro will be tag teaming back and forth. Tim will be doing the data on all the different surveys, and then Pedro will be going over all the input that, that was received on other ways and the changes that we might be bringing forward. Okay?
So, we're going to start off with elementary. And then we're going to be covering the current practices, the survey results and student input. Just, uh, ahead of time, we're not doing student input for elementary, but we will provide the student input for junior high and high school. So the elementary, the current practices, cellular devices must be kept in backpacks at all times and while the student is on campus. And Tim's going to go over the data on this. Yeah, I'm going to look over here to my left because that's a little far for me to see right now, this time of night. So the first question, um, presented to staff members, um, was, how difficult is it to manage mobile device phone use during instructional time? So in the classroom. So almost ninety percent said easy or very easy. Um, the, this is the certificated staff data that's being displayed right now. So that includes, uh, teachers, um, and counselors are kind of our, our biggest groups. Second question, how difficult is it to manage student mobile device use dur- during non-instructional or recess and lunchtime? And you can see, uh, a little over thirty percent are saying it's difficult or very difficult. Um, the, the gray, uh, part of this chart, um, means unsure. Um, the, the gray, uh, part of this chart, um, means unsure. Well, we asked parents and guardians if they support the current policy, um, as stated, um, above in the survey. Sixty, or eighty-seven point two percent said they supported it. And then when asked if they felt that the policy was being efficiently enforced at their school, we had, no surprise, fif- almost fifty-six percent unsure. Six point nine percent no, and the remainder yes. So, um, overall here, um, we see that parents, um, uh, support the, the policy as it is.
I have a question. Um, I don't remember if the survey allowed for, like, disaggregating the data for school sites. Not that we needed that information, but that it could have been useful for, uh, site administrators?
Absolutely, it's, um, it's disaggregated in many different ways, including school sites.
Alright, so, so they'll get that information, or they've, they've seen it already?
Um, they have, I'm not sure if Ted has shown this to EAC. They have not seen it. We can certainly share it out.
I don't know if they want it, but I'd be interested for them, if I was them.
Now we go to junior high, and this is kinda like my, not expertise, but my experience.
Your wheelhouse, kinda your wheelhouse.
Yeah, kinda my wheelhouse. So cellular devices must be turned off and put away from first bell to the last bell. And that is across the board, all three junior highs. But it's gonna be, I, I, I'm actually very excited to present this for you, because there's actually some pretty good information here. Students may use the devices before and after school. So, uh, Tim's gonna go over the data really quick, and then I'll provide student input. Yeah, so, um, for junior high and high school, we asked additional questions. And so starting at the top with the certificated staff questions, we asked if they incorporated mobile devices into their instruction. Ninety percent said no, approximately ninety percent said no. We asked them, how difficult is it to manage mobile device phone use during instructional time? And you can see a significant majority there, um, having, having difficulty. We asked them, uh, if they believe that student mobile devices should be turned off and kept out of sight during class time only, but allowed at other times, so that would be, you know, passing periods and lunch. Seventy-seven point nine percent said no. We asked if they believe student mobile devices should be turned off and kept out of sight on campus at all times. Eighty-six percent said yes, so they, they believe that the idea behind the current policy was, they agreed with that. Please indicate, and the next question, please indicate your willingness to enforce a more stringent district-wide policy in classrooms. Overwhelming majority said, um, definitely willing or somewhat willing. Uh, the last question for staff members was, please indicate your willingness to enforce a more stringent district-wide policy on campus, and the overwhelming majority said yes. So, so staff is willing to, to enforce, um, at, and at the same time, they believe that the idea behind the current policy, they agree with that idea behind the current policy. Going, moving on to parents and, and guardians, um, first question there is, do you believe that the policy, um, is currently being efficiently enforced at the school your child attends? Pretty evenly split, again, a significant number unsurprisingly unsure. The last question indicates eighty, about eighty-three percent in support of the current policy. Any questions about those numbers? And I get to provide you what our students said about this. I wanna let you know that myself, um, Kelly Staley and Jay Marchant went and visited every single leadership class at the secondary level, and we had great discussions with our students, and to be quite honest, they were extremely insightful. So, you're gonna notice up here that I'm gonna talk about junior high, sorry, Chico Junior and Marsh, and I'm gonna combine them. There's gonna be a reason, because they're distinctly different when we bring in bidwell. So when it comes to cellphone use, a lot of our students shared, because this came directly from our students. They shared that they communicate with their parents, and they use their phones for that purpose, and to communicate with their friends. They also said the following, that they needed, uh, we needed to educate our parents as to when to contact our students. In other words, we have parents in our district that are texting and or calling our students while school is going on, right? So that there needed to be communication with regards to that. They also stated that there will be students still using cellphones on campus regardless of the rules that are in place. Once again, this is coming from our students. There is inconsistency in how staff enforces the cellphone policy. So they kinda felt, hey, wait a minute here, not all the teachers are on the same page with regards to the cellphone policy. And last, they stated, students believe a more consistent enforcement plan could be more effective in managing cellphone use. So that was very telling with that last one.
Before we move on to bidwell, I just wanna, when the students were saying about educating their parents, but we also asked them, why are their parents texting, or, and they said usually most of other, uh, the families are in two, um, two different households. Usually those are the parents that are saying who's picking up who today, or it could be attached to, um, if they're going home with somebody else, or walking home, those type of things, that's where the kids would say that they were communicating mostly with their parents on, or if somebody else was picking up on them, and, or reminding them that they had an appointment. That's why they just said, you know, that's why most of the time they were communicating with their parents on those types of things, uh, not just, hey, how's it going?
With bidwell.
Could, could, Jay, I'm, I'm gonna jump in on what you just said, and I'm, I'm going to, um, say that before kids had cellphones, this is what our offices and office aides, that's, we took those messages, that, you know, who are you going home with today? Did you remember your dental appointment? And we'd have to write them out, and then send an office aide to the classroom, which interrupted class instruction. Give this, the message to the student who then had to, you know, take it and read it during class time, or, but, but it was disruptive. To, to say that there weren't disruptions because of the need of parents and others to communicate with their kids during school is misleading. It's just that it got different after everybody had a cellphone.
So, once again, when we talk about bidwell, I do wanna discuss them separately. Because when we went and spoke with the students, it was distinctly different. We asked students, hey, listen, what do you guys use your cellphones for? And sure, they were on par with the other two, uh, junior highs, that they use it to communicate with their parents and friends. However, they also stated that there were minimal cellphone issues on campus. And I gotta tell you, from my perspective, that really piqued my interest. They also stated that all staff were consistent across the board and did not allow cellphone use in class or outside of the class. So everybody was on the same page. They also stated that, and, and here's one of the key things, all cellphones had to be turned off and placed in the students' backpacks. I can tell you from my experience, uh, as principal of Chico Junior in years past, we just asked the students to put them in their pockets. Genius from Mr. McKay, who goes, yeah, they need to be inside their backpacks. So I was like, oh man, I, why didn't I think of that? So simple, right? Because it tooks, it takes away the tendency to grab their phone and constantly check it, right? Yeah.
Do you think that you were more ambivalent on the subject than he, uh, is?
Possibly. You know, it's one of those things where we, you know, it's, uh, how big our problems are until they become a problem, right? And so, um, things change as time goes on.
I think that you are an excellent principal.
Well, well, thank you.
I, 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 I had a student or two there while, while you were the principal, and you did a great job. But also on Mr. McKay fairly well, and yeah, he runs like a, like a tight ship, you know? And I think that's what we need for, for this topic, you know, is, uh, consistency and, and, but most of all, order.
Yeah. Consistency is something that, uh, the students brought up, and, um, to me, it was, it was quite telling. Because the students themselves were discussing this about how the school actually ran, how their teachers implemented all of this. And last here, um, students understand the consequences, and there are weekly reminders, uh, during morning announcements. We showed up unannounced, just so you know, um, meaning Mr. McKay didn't know we were gonna show up. And he didn't even know we were there, which is good, right? But we were in there talking to our leadership students, and over the announcement, he says, hey, listen, students, just remember, you cannot have your cellphones out, they need to be inside your backpack.
You know, on the subject of having, uh, the phone in your backpack, the phone in your pocket, there actually is a study, and I apologize, I don't have it up in front of me, so I can't cite it, but it's really out there. You could find it if you just looked for it. But they have showed that even if a student has a cellphone on their person, that their performance in class, and their attention actually goes down, you know? I extrapolate that the further away it is from their control, the more out of sight, out of mind it is for them.
I agree, and you can throw me into that same type of situation. We go to cabinet meetings, and I don't mind sharing that I leave my cellphone sometimes right on top of the thing, and there's always a tendency. This last cabinet meeting, I left my cellphone in my office, and I was like, oh man, that's why I was attentive. Alright.
Uh, really quick, sorry, on, on, back on the topic of bidwell.
Yeah.
Um, I am curious if the students also brought up, uh, any sort of, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Just proactive, uh, information that they had been provided with, or, you know, it's like the PBIS type stuff, where they're being told about the, the implications of using their cellphones, and why that might be not, not good or safe, or, um, I just, I feel like, um, I, I recall maybe somebody mentioning that they did do that type of thing also. So it's not just, this is the rule, follow it, but also there was like quite a bit of why given. Do you, did you get that sense from the students, or have you heard, uh, about like what bidwell does in terms of educating kids about it?
Yeah, interestingly enough, in terms of the educational piece, what they said, it was done at the beginning of the school year. Much like, um, the other two junior highs do, at the beginning of the school year. I think one of the distinct differences was the, um, one of the students said, hey, listen, yeah, the, they were reminding us, reminding us for a good month or something like that, and then it stopped. So, um, versus, uh, what we noticed at bidwell is like, it, I mean, the reminders were still going, and we did this in May, right? So it was still going, yeah.
I think one po- uh, powerful, um, tool also is that the teachers are demonstrating, um, that they're putting away their cellphones, and they're not easily distracted if something comes up, you know, during teaching time. So, having just sort of that universal theme that this time is important, and we're, we, I'm giving my full devotion, and you're giving your full devotion.
I, I do believe there wasn't, there's always exceptions, right? But on the constant, all teachers were not allowing their students to use their cellphone, and that, that's pretty telling. Now we're gonna go on to the Chico High School current practice. So currently, all cellular devices must be turned off and put away during class time. Students may use devices on campus during non-class time, passing periods, lunchtime, before school and after school. So, no cellphone use during class slash instructional time. Alright, moving on to the high school survey. So, again, starting with certificated staff members, um, at the top, we see, um, when asked if they incorporate mobile device use in, into instruction, we see almost thirty-eight percent of high school teachers answered yes, that they do. So that's a significant increase from junior high. When asked how difficult is it to manage, um, mobile device use during instructional time, you can see the significant majority said difficult or very difficult. Uh, item three up there is, I believe student mobile devices should be turned off and kept out of sight during class time only, but allowed at other times. And we see over eighty percent of staff, um, believe that students should be able to use their, um, cellphones outside of class, while on campus. Uh, when asked if they believe, uh, student mobile devices should be turned off and kept out of sight on my campus at all times, almost eighty percent said no. So those, those two questions agree with each other. Please, next question, please indicate your willingness to enforce a more stringent district-wide policies, policy in classrooms, um, up towards ninety percent were definitely willing or somewhat willing. When asked their, about their willingness to enforce a more stringent district-wide policy on campus, so campus-wide, the majority, about sixty-four, sixty-five percent, um, said somewhat not willing or definitely not willing. So, inside the classroom, um, far more willing to enforce than outside. Moving on to the parents and guardians, uh, when asked if they support the cellphone policy, the current cellphone policy, over ninety percent of the parents said yes. Uh, when asked if they felt this policy is being efficiently enforced at their, at their school, um, again, you see the big unsure in the middle, almost forty percent. About a third said no, and the remainder, about twenty-seven percent said yes regarding enforcement. When asked if they would prefer high school students to keep cellphones and smartwatches in their backpacks from the first bell to the, to the last bell, meaning no, uh, no usage at passing periods or lunch, seventy percent said no, and the remainder said yes. Do any questions on those? This is a summary of our Chico High and PV students. Students need access to cellphones during the day for, for communication with parents, work, athletics, and other responsibilities. It was really telling just how many students said, we communicate with our, um, our jobs, our personnel, and we constantly have shifts changing, so on and so forth. We really use to communicate, uh, with our bosses. So that was like holy smokes, I didn't really, that was not even registering for me, had no idea. There's inconsistency among teachers in enforcing cellphone rules, leading to varying experiences for students. Once again, there was an expression of inconsistency among the teachers at the high school level. They, they said the following, a successful policy would require all teachers to be on the same page and be consistent with enforcement beyond just the first month of school. Which I was like, okay, you know, there's a theme here, and it's becoming pretty evident. Completely banning cellphone use during school hours, including passing periods and lunch, presents numerous challenges. This includes difficulty in supervision, and the likelihood that strict, strict rules may lead to a more rule-breaking behavior, meaning that students would find ways to get on their cellphone regardless, right? Because they need to communicate with their bosses, or they need to communicate through athletics, because their coaches are, might be texting them, or, or changes in, in fields, or changes in practices and times, and so on and so forth. They felt emphasis should be placed on educating students about responsible cellphone use, starting in elementary and middle school. Which was like, okay, alright, we, we do that, but maybe not as, uh, as consistent as we should, right? And they also said lunch and passing period supervision should be focused on larger issues than cellphone use. And so I was like, okay, that's an interesting one, because, okay, in the eyes of our students, cellphone really wasn't an issue at lunch, it was other things that were happening. So when we bring this all together, and we take the input of, uh, the surveys, input of our parents' certificated staff, our students, this is what it boils down to. Elementary certificated staff and parents support the current practices. At the junior high level, certificated staff and parents support the current practices. Certificated staff is willing to enforce a more stringent policy in Certificated staff is willing to enforce a more stringent policy in, in and out of the classroom. For the high schools, certificated staff and parents support the current practices. Certificated staff is willing to enforce a more stringent policy inside classroom, but not elsewhere on campus. So this comes to your ask. You asked us to look at board policy fifty-one thirty-one point eight. And let's see if we can click on that. So this is fifty-one thirty-one point eight, and this is the current board policy.
How about, can you just blow it up a little bit? Sorry, I'm sixty-something.
This is what it currently states, says the following, students may use cellphones, smartwatches, pagers, or or other mobile communication devices on campus during non-instructional time, as long as the device is utilized in accordance with law and any rules that individ- individual schools, uh, sites may impose. Mobile communication devices shall be turned off during instructional time. However, students shall not be prohibited from possessing or using a mobile communication device under any of the following circumstances, and then it goes on from there. You asked us to do the following, if we can click back. Thank you. And this is what we bring forth to you today. It would read the following, the governing board prohibits the use of mobile communication devices on campus except as allowed by law and board policy. Mobile communication devices shall not be assessed, accessed, sorry, by students during, and then we put up options. The first one, like you asked us, school hours for all students in grades TK through twelfth. We did put that second option up there, says, we read that all together, mobile communication devices shall not be accessed by students during school hours at elementary and junior high schools, and during instructional time at the high school level. If we can go back to the presentation, okay. So that comes up to the board discussion in terms of next steps. And, uh, um, with this, I do wanna move forward with this. Once the board decides, asks you the decision of going with the first option or the second option, then we will create our ARs in the spirit of the board policy. If you decide to go with option one, then we will go with the following AR, or the, the, uh, the, the spirit. And it says cellphone use may be used by students on campus before and after school only. During school hours, including after school programs, devices must be turned off and kept out of sight unless otherwise approved by a teacher or administrator. Consistent enforcement of common district-wide consequences. So we would make sure that all the junior highs, high schools, and elementary school sites were all doing the consistent, um, practices and so on and so forth. Same thing with option two, but of course, it does meet option two in the board policy, if that's the one you go with. So cellphones may be used by students per current practices, consistent enforcement of common consequences. Consequences are common by grade level span, elementary, junior high, and high school.
By adding an AR, I just wanna make, it does make it consistent, and it tells the school sites what needs to be happening when they, they are not being followed. First offense, second offense, third offense, like the first offense, uh, would be something like that the cellphone is taken, get brought down to the office, and the student can take and, uh, pick it up after school. Second offense, the parent would come and pick it up after school. Third offense, it could be possibly more restorative stuff, being on the no-fly list, which means you can't go to certain activities after school, games, dances, those types of things. We, um, could, again, those things could, and I'm not gonna put that, cause we'll allow the, the staff, um, um, having a little bit of freedom, if it's going to be Saturday schools and detentions above that, but the still, the third offense, the parent would have to pick it up. And possibly we get to a practice where, um, the, 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 has to be off or turned in at the office at that point when it becomes a repeat offender. It's interesting, but talking to the students, they pretty much thought that was the case for, you know, when we were talking to them, that they knew it would be taken from them. Obviously, sometimes they get a warning, put your phone away. You know, when it becomes a problem, they knew it could be taken from them and they would pick it up, or it got to where a parent would have to pick it up.
I think that the baby is, um, the inconsistencies from classroom to classroom. And, and that's not necessarily always just a, a staff member who's being lazy or, or anything. Sometimes it's exhaustion, when you have to remind kids, you're spending five minutes of your fifty-minute instruction time, just telling kids to put their phones away. Every time you have to stop, it's a disruption, so that's where it really gets hard, and I think the culture change, like, you know, Bidwell's been working on is, is a really good approach to trying to, to tackle that. It really getting to the root of the why for our students. I, I, even with my four-year-old, when I can explain the why to her, she is all in, buys into whatever, whatever I'm trying to enforce with her. And I, that's anybody, you know? I don't think any of us, I, I doubt any of us respond well to authority if we're just told what to do and not given the why and have a good explanation about it. Uh, and I think that the draft policy kind of lacks that a little bit, you know, why are we wanting to kind of have a, a firmer uh, thumb on this policy? Uh, we took out the, the fluffy language from the old one, but it, it would be nice to see, you know, because there are these concerns and that there are studies that demonstrate X, Y, Z, this is why we're, we're wanting to make sure that we're very clear with the cellphone policy. But that's just kind of my two cents at this point.
I do. Um, in speaking with Mr. McKay, there was something very, um, I guess enlightening, was that towards the end of last year, um, cellphones seemed to be, um, and not only cellphones, but the earbuds seemed to be a problem on his campus. So he sent out a survey, and in that survey, he asked all his teachers, will you commit? Will you commit to enforcing, um, making sure that students put away their cellphones, make sure that they put them away in their backpacks? Everybody consistently, will you do this, um, trying to remember, within ten feet? If you see something within te- ten feet of you, even when you're out about walking, that you're gonna do something. See something, say something. And so he got that buy-in. Uh, I do believe if I remember correct, it was like something like close to ninety percent of his staff, uh, committed. And that was the commitment that took place this school year. So it's not like this is, uh, um, well, it just, just for everyone here to know that this started last year or the year before to implement this current school year.
And so, um, one of the options that you've provided, uh, that is a straight, straight-out district-wide cellphone ban on campuses is really the status quo. It's what, it's what policies are already, are already outlined. But just be more clear about the intent of the policies and then having an AR that really gives the site admin, yeah, the direction of, of how to implement that successfully. And it's nice that Bidwell's a little bit ahead of that and has done kind of the pilot year already.
Yes.
Demonstrated success. Uh, being able to see success is very helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's huge. And more than anything, it creates, um, a sense, at least among educators, hey, uh, I feel supported. Right? Bec- amongst their peers. It didn't turn out like, for example, where you have, oh, well, this such-and-such educator is allowing them to listen to music. Uh, that's not an issue anymore, right? Or such-and-such is allowing them to use their cellphones, that's not an issue anymore. Nobody's allowed to use the cellphones.
I have a question about the classrooms who do say that they use their phones for instructional time, or sometimes they let their students maybe listen to music on their phones at the middle school level, especially, um, excuse me, but really this would be at any, any grade level. How, how do, how do they navigate that? I mean, do we still need to get buy-in from those staff members and say, here are the ways you should work around those tools? So we can continue to enforce the cellphone policy.
I, I, if you were to ask me, one of the things that I, I would love to see happen is also follow the suits of Mr. McKay and his commitment, um, from his school site. This is what we're doing together.
If I'm gonna add to that, the, 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 the policy that, um, that comes forward tonight and the AR that's going to come after that, that will be brought to the leadership team, the principals, um, in the first of August, when we meet with them about different changes for ARs or policies to go over. Um, this is one of the ones that we already had put on our list, that we will be, whatever the board decides where we're going to, um, that we will be talking about and the AR and how it needs to be enforced, and what the students are saying that it needs to be consistent upon everybody, because when you go from classical, and I'm not saying, again, what you said, the, on, on the teacher thing, but this gives it a little bit more bite, or no, this is a policy, then the principals will need to be doing it at their first staff meeting, which is the, I believe, the Friday before that Monday, um, of school to say, okay, this is our policy, what you're talking about with the commitment. This is what the commitment of the board and, and, um, what we are going to be moving forward with, and we want to be followed. And it's just gonna be a change, but we just need to make sure that everybody understands us what it is.
Regarding the, uh, eight teachers who responded in the junior high survey who said that they did use, uh, mobile devices incorporated into instruction. Do we know whether any of those were at Bidwell?
What the kids were telling is sometimes it would be in art classes where they were working on their ceramics, and they had individual time to be working on, most of that came from the electives at the junior highs where they were, hey, I'm gonna be doing, I'm working on a project, okay, you can put your headphones in as long as nobody else can hear him and that type of thing, but it was very rare at, at Bidwell.
The exception was, uh, yearbook. Where students did use cellphones, but they cared to pass with them, to allow them, and everybody knew that student was in yearbook. Yep.
So yeah, I mean, if there are, if there are, uh, teachers who are using cellphones as a tool in their classrooms, uh, even at the high school level, I think that there would be, it would be a good opportunity to have like a brainstorm session on, you know, the what about when I wanted to do this? It's like, well, let's talk about the workaround, how we could keep kids off their phones, because if they have their phone in their hand, they're gonna wanna check their, their social media apps. They're gonna wanna check their text messages, and that's not the place to do it. So again, it's a culture thing, and it's a discussion among staff members and buy-in with, with staff members and, and, uh, the trust in the process.
As it's been brought up before, but also just the fact that not everybody has a cellphone, and having some who are allowed to use them and others who are not, it doesn't feel very fair.
Yeah, and our Chromebooks really can do pretty much all of those things, including allowing them to listen to music.
That is correct.
I, I have had times as a teacher where that's, that is what I need for that thirty minutes, is for them to, to work on their project. And if they wanna listen to music, please, because otherwise they're being distracting to other students. But they could do that through their Chromebooks with, with, you know, ear, earphones that are, are provided. They don't need to listen to their AirPods on whatever they're listening to on their phone. You laugh because.
Yes, cause I know.
Are we in Q and A right now, or general discussion?
Yeah, we're still at Q and A right now.
Is there anything that could be done? Um, I was recently talking, actually, some of us were recently talking to, um, Erica, um, Sheridan, who said that she thought that, uh, there might be some sort of special arrangement that, that should be sought for with respect to freshmen in the high school environment. Is there anything that could be done there to bifurcate sophomores, juniors, and seniors with freshmen in terms of their cellphone usage on high school campuses?
I think there would need to be more discussion with the freshman teachers in that, but at passing period, it'd be very difficult to say freshmen can't be on theirs or at lunch compared to the other ones, to figuring out who's who out there.
We could have, um, student monitors, like to walk around the hall, spotting freshmen on their cellphones and calling them out.
Get that armband on them, get that armband. That's old school.
It's, I, I don't know that I would necessarily agree with the approach, but a method could be that they turn their phone into their first period teacher and then have to get it back at the end of the day, but that, that's like the only way I could see that working out enforcement-wise. And none of us really wanna take possession of other kids' five hundred dollar cellphones, so.
I do know that, like, um, coaches often communicate about practice, you know, that particular afternoon, and it would be hard to, to distinguish, you know, I mean, there's certainly freshmen on JV teams, varsity teams, and, um, I, I could see where that would be a bit confusing.
On that. It's not just afternoons, it's during the daytime as well, because they're going, you know, they're traveling.
Yeah, uh, but I was wondering if Bidwell has also done very much yet in parent engagement about cellphones? Cause there was quite a bit of feedback about parents reaching out to students during school time, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. But, um, helping students develop the ability to have and set boundaries, set and maintain boundaries, and not be twenty-four-seven accessible, um, through their phone, uh, communicating that to parents. You know, if you need to contact your student during the school day, especially middle school students, you need to call the office.
I, yeah, I believe, um, Dave, Dave does a lot of communication videos, I don't know, on different hot topics on his campus, and one of them was cellphones that he put out to his parents. He has, he does them on YouTube.
Yep.
That, I believe he has one.
And on Facebook.
And on Facebook.
Um, so yeah, that, just to encourage that too, and consider that as, you know, one of the tools in the, in a in an AR or in the discussions for enforcement.
But I do wanna go back to Matt's point about freshmen, um, I think like, um, Sheridan tapped on it a little bit, but that is something that really needs to be addressed, not just at the beginning of school, about the use of, of cellphones. Cause when we talked to those eighth grade, um, students, you know, they already knew that they were gonna be able to have them at passing period and lunch, and they were a little bit panicking when we were talking about the possibility of changing that, but it's more about, um, um, letting them know what we're talking about, the addictiveness of the phones, when's the proper time of using them, what could happen if you do, and constantly have to have those reminders more than just the beginning of the school year to be effective, because again, uh, it comes into with sixth graders when they come on to junior high campuses, and the same thing when freshmen come on to think the rules and why these rules are in place.
Uh, so just back to my point about communicating that with parents, you know, consistently and throughout the school year, um, I just, you know, I think about of being a future parent or a parent, future, the parent, oh, you don't have to say. My nose is stuffed up again, so I'm like.
Future high school student, future junior high student.
Might be, and, and I need to let Isla know that her pickup arrangements have changed, you know, and it happened at ten AM or it happened at twelve PM. I, if I needed her to know that now, I'll call the office, but if, if it's something that affects her after school, then she, I, I could text her and know that she's gonna get the message at the end of the school day when she's allowed to turn her phone back on. Like, that is what parents need to understand and, and envision when we're talking about how this cellphone policy really needs to be consistent among staff, students, and families.
And that's, uh, exactly right, and that's, uh, what, uh, our junior highs and high schools, uh, students were actually saying too. It was like, hey, we do need to educate our parents as to when is the appropriate time to contact us.
And most students also said that they could go to a teacher or an administrator and say, listen, I'm supposed to check my phone. I don't know if I'm picking up my second grader, you know, you know, after school and those kind of things, but they knew they can go into the office or ask the teacher, can I just look at it real quick and then turn it off in front of you and put it back in my backpack? Most of them felt that they had staff that they could do that with, and, um, it's just again, um, educating all students that they can do that instead of just doing it underneath, you know, their cell or their Chromebook or that kind of thing.
The, the discussion just, um, got to the place where I, I have concerns, and that's the parent education about communicating with their student and, um, getting the students and the parents to understand that there will be a time to check their phone for text messages at the end of the class period. Um, saying you're gonna call the office and send a message, oh my gosh. It, it just, it doesn't work. There isn't staff or student aides available to take care of that, and it is very disruptive in the classroom when they open the door and have to go in and hand the message to the teacher and, I, I, you know, I don't support that because of all the years I lived with that disruption. I do think that letting the students check their text messages between classes is, is appropriate. I also think and support messaging the why, the negatives of too much cellphone use and what it does to your attention span in school as well as out of school. You know, the negatives of, of what we're doing with cellphones and the kids on it for, for so much time is, is absolutely there, as Mr. Tennis said. And we need, we need to educate the kids, not that they aren't hearing it too on other, you know, media things that are saying, hey, this is bad for you, but say it and say it over, over and over again like Bidwell is doing. And I, I do support continuing the message past the first week of school. I appreciate what Mr. McKay has done. It also raises the importance level of the message to the student if they're hearing it repeatedly. It means, ah, I guess they're serious about that issue.
Exactly. Consistency is key there.
Do we have any further questions for clarification from staff? Okay, so, hearing none, thank you for your presentation and for doing the work and getting the data together. I know it was a lot for the end of the school year and you're doing all the other things as well, but obviously this is, was an important issue to, to address. It's become more, more apparent that it was an important issue to address, so I'm glad that we've tackled it.
And thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We have one person that has signed up for a public comment. And so, at this time, we'll take a public comment and then we'll move into our discussion vote period. So, we have Michelle Cooper. Michelle knows the time rules, I won't have to say it again.
Thank you. So, it's funny, so I'm in HR, and the one thing that we've learned in HR is if you're gonna do a survey, use the data. If you're not gonna use the data, don't take the survey, right? So, I hope that we can look at the data that we got and see that everybody is like concurring that the current policy is adequate and that, and I agree, like, all we need to do, the answer to this is develop an AR that enforces the policy, and I love adding the why to it, I think that's great, I think everybody responds better when they know the why. And then teach responsible use. I'm, I'm wholeheartedly agree with, you know, teaching kids that they can check their, or the high school kids anyway, that they can check their phones during passing period. I know from my own student, you know, there's times where, you know, I forget to tell him something in the morning, I text it to him once I get to work, I know he's in class, but I know that that cellphone is put away. He is really good about that, and I know that when he has a break, he'll answer me. I don't expect him to answer me in the middle of class. I will also say, though, that there have been times where I have called the office to excuse him from school for a doctor's appointment or, you know, tell him he needs to be out in front of school at a certain time to be picked up for an appointment, and their response to me is, well, are you gonna tell him? Like, we'll have the, the call slip here for him, he needs to come to the office to get it. So, it's my responsibility to text him and let him know that he needs to go to the office to do that. So, I think the staff is really relying on the parent to communicate with their child through the cellphone as well. Same thing with the nurse. Anytime he's gone to the nurse's office, they have him use his cellphone to call me. And probably because it's faster, he has the phone number right there, they don't have to take time to look it up. Exactly, exactly. I won't go, oh, it's just the school, I'm not gonna. And I, I will say, my, he did go to Bidwell and Mr. McKay was great, we never had an issue. The cellphone was never an issue there. It actually was a huge help when my child left school one day on his bike and had a horrific accident between Bidwell and McManus. Luckily, the McManus principal witnessed the accident and grabbed the cellphone out of his backpack, found mom, called me right away. Before he could get to Bidwell to get, you know, numbers or whatever like that, I was already there. He ended up with two broken arms. So, I was super grateful that he, that that principal knew to, knew to get that cellphone and call mom right away. So, those are just my thoughts, and like, I agree, just, let's just develop a really good AR policy to enforce this, thank you.
Hey, Michelle, really quick, sorry. So, the first example that you gave about the, just the call the office, offices, you know, that, that thing, is that at the high school level at this time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any other further public comment, anybody else that would like to come speak? All righty, well, seeing none. We have two options for the path forward that have been presented to us. We are the board, so we could move in whatever direction in that, in that way, as long as it's legal. And so, I just ask if there's a board member who would like to put a motion on the table.
I would. There is a, here we go. So, the draft board policy, five, one, three, one point eight, where there were the two options laid out.
Yeah, Tyler, is this slide before?
No, that's not the one.
Yeah, it's this slide before, I believe. That's the AR, it's right there, go to the draft. There you go.
Yeah, so, I would like to have a, have a bell-to-bell, you know, prohibition, but I, I sense that that's out of sync with, with where people are on this. And so, you can't always have, have everything you want. I do think that cellphones are a very big distraction for students, and I think that they could have a better learning experience if they didn't have them on their person, but there are a lot of very immature students in our midst who, who seem to be able to handle this. But option number two up here, I think, is a very short, concise, elegant way to say what, what I think I hear there being support for. And phones will not be accessed by students during school hours at elementary and junior high schools and during instructional time at the high school level. I think that is a very, just elegant solution to our problems. I don't, I don't think it's wise for us to have junior hires all on their cellphones during lunchtime and it's the parent of two, three junior hires at one time or another. Yeah, I, I don't think that, that those students need to have all the pressures of social media and the, the equity issues, if you will, that go along with some students having them and others not having them, the sorts of things that are available on the internet that fascinate students that age, where there's really not much of even of a hint of adulthood with those junior hires. So, I don't think they need to be on their phones during lunch. And, and I would advocate option two because it makes clear that, that that won't be happening at, at the grade school level or junior high. But we're recognizing that high schoolers, you've got the open campus thing going on and, you know, these young folks are starting to take, you know, some baby steps into adulthood and, and being given more responsibility and, and, you know, the community is trusting them more and, and the school system is trusting them more. So, it makes sense to have, to have, you know, phones, which are so ubiquitous, be a part of their life and to accommodate for the fact that that's just kinda gonna be there. Whether you make a rule or not, there's gonna be a reality of people, you know, being on their cellphones and conducting business that is sometimes productive and contributes to their quality of life and, you know, even the, the goings-on at the school. So, I like option two on this, and, and I think that the spirit, you know, and even the language contained herein should be useful for an AR because it's just so good. You know, it's just one line, it says it all. So, I would move that we, you create an AR that, that incorporates or directly reflects this option two as written here in this draft board policy.
A second.
Question for clarification. So, we would vote to approve a revised board policy that then would have an AR that was developed to go with it. So, do you want to restate your motion to approve this board policy with option two? Or make any kind of other changes to, or I don't know if we need to change it at all?
As I think I said it, I said, sure, I would like to, you know, amend this board policy consistent with option two, and then build an AR, maybe even tonight, if you think it could be done, to, to reflect that.
I think we could probably get it done tomorrow during our head services meeting, the AR, since we have most of it. We just don't have, we have drafts that we've been working on, but we might wanna add a little bit of the why that you're asking for, Ms. Dolby, and to the AR, but I think we can get it done clearly by tomorrow or Tuesday at the latest. Yeah, yeah, we can share it at the next, the AR, the next meeting. But it'll be ready for school, for sure.
So, would, oh, my gosh, my question just left my brain. Is it necessary at all, does, does the definitions adhere, def, like, there's no loopholes, right? There's no, like, we don't need to claw out air buds or ear buds or smartwatches or, like, it's all pretty much all encompassed in mobile devices, right?
I mean, the accessed, you know? The use of mobile communication devices on campus, except, mobile communication devices shall not be accessed by students during. So, if you've got ear buds, I think you're accessing your mobile device.
Right, I was thinking about playing music, I, I could just see loopholes.
Yeah, not. Strengthen it.
Just wanted to make sure we, it's clear enough for people. Smart goggles, big glasses. Ooh, that's a tough one, smart glasses? Those are coming. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. I feel like that's, that was valid, just wanted to clarify the intent of the motion. And any further discussion, Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Mr. Caldera, in your experience when you were still at Chico Junior, did your office people have a lot of time with phone calls where they needed to deliver messages to students from parents?
I, I'm gonna say not necessarily when I was there. We didn't necessarily have that issue.
Was it because you already had cellphones?
No, what we told the students, if they wanted to use the cellphones to communicate with their parents, they had to go to the office.
Ah.
So, if there was an issue, we did let them go to the office and they could use their cellphones there to communicate with their parents, but then afterwards, they had to be put away right there in the main office. So, it alleviated a lot of the communication that needed to be done by the office. The other, the other part with that, a lot of our teachers said, hey, please do not do whatever you can to not disrupt the instructional practices during class time. Please cherish that time as much as possible, so therefore, that's why we did.
How did the student gain the knowledge that there was a message for them, that they needed to go to the office to use their cellphone to retrieve?
If that was the case, we were very strategic. Sometimes it happened during passing periods, during break, lunchtime. We tried to hit them hard there, and we'd let the parents know, hey, here's the situation, we're gonna deliver at such and such time, just in case. So, for example, if a student needed to be pulled out during fifth period, we'd let them know during lunchtime.
Yeah, I, I do still have a concern about the no, no mobile device in their possession for junior high kids.
So, so I taught junior high in this district for eight years.
Right.
And, and I, and I have also observed classrooms in the, almost with the four years that I've been out of the class at this point, which, so there's, and it's changed a lot even in that time. But there were infrequent disruptions for, like, time-sensitive things that we would get call slips from the office for, but they weren't so disruptive that it would make sense to say, oh, well, kids can have access to their phones and, and be able to check their phones for messages from parents. Because usually in an emergency situation, when you need to get a hold of your kid now, like, you're, you're, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to go through those channels, and it's more disruptive for students to have access to their phones than it is for a call slip to come in once every couple of class periods.
And, and also do wanna share that the vast majority of the texting from parents to students was really happening, yeah, let's say it happened during the school day, but the students, just the vast majority of them really was, where am I picking you up? Is it on Oleander, is it on Memorial, is it on the Wells Fargo side? So, it was really about where to meet the parent to pick up the student. And the minute they walked out of sixth period, they opened up their cellphone, they checked, and they knew where to go.
After the last bell.
After the last bell, yeah.
I do think in an ideal world, there would be a solution for our, our lower classmate, you know, freshman who are still technically eighth graders when they walk onto the, the high school campus and that there was a way to better transition them to the responsibilities of having access to your phone during passing periods of lunchtime because the, the, the biggest fear in that that I have is, is the potential for bullying and access to social media that happens during that time. And so, so students who take advantage of having their phones to take up inappropriate pictures, post things on social media during school time, ta, take videos of people without their permission in those spaces, passing period and lunchtime, like, that is what I, I'm the most concerned about. And I wish there was a better solution to tackle that issue that was easier than culture change cuz culture change is one of the hardest things that we could do on school campuses. It's the longest-lasting, but it is, it's a heavy lift sometimes. So, I think that that's gonna be our, our biggest challenge when it comes to mobile devices moving forward, assuming we implement some more stringent regulations. Is motion clear, motion's clear, intent is clear? I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going back to reading the lead-in to the options. Mobile communication devices shall not be accessed by students during, and the, the two options. It doesn't seem, if our intent is to not have cellphones and, and mobile devices in the possession of junior high school students, I think that's what that needs to say.
The AR would say they'd be in the backpacks.
The AR would say what?
They'd be in the backpacks. You know, not in their possession, so there's, there's different ways of saying that. We don't wanna say possession, but we would say that we would require them to be in their backpacks.
Yeah, and, and I don't object to that. Being in the backpack is not something that I would, you know, lose hair over. The, I wanna go back to this, the slot, the data, and look at the junior high data again for Chico Junior and Marsh.
Did you just wanna see the student or did you wanna see the data from parents or teachers?
Yeah, all of it, I wanna see what's. Huh?
This data is for all the three junior highs.
Yeah, I thought Bidwell was separate.
There was a bullet, the bullet.
Student slide was different at Bidwell, not the actual survey question.
And I can't read that from here. Was there support from parents at Chico Junior and Marsh to have access to their communication devices limited?
Yeah, all three schools says that they want to keep the policy as is, when the bell rings, they are off into the backpacks. And then the bottom one would show that for parents and. that for parents and, and staff.
Okay.
Eighty-five point seven percent, I believe student mobile devices should be turned off and kept out of sight on my campus at all times.
Correct.
Yeah, it just reiterating that this is actually the current policy, it's been this policy for a long time, it's just not very well uniformly enforced. Okay, I'm ready to vote. Mr. Tannis, you made the, you made the motion, we'll start with you.
Tannis, aye.
Concan, aye.
Dolby, aye?
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
All righty, thanks, everybody, looking forward to seeing the final product in the next week or two, two weeks?
Two weeks.
By the, by the next meeting, great. Oh, I still have more to do. Next is eight point four point two, discussion action for the approval of a revised, updated, new board policies.
Okay, so board policy five, one, four, five point nine, hate motivated behavior, we did bring to the board previously for a first reading, we have now, per board direction and staff, have worked with NorCal Anti-Racism Coalition, and sought their input, because they had some questions about this, so we worked with them, and bring forward the same policy where they were here last time and said that they supported the policy, they've done some work on the AR as well, but the board approves the policy, so we're bringing that forward for approval tonight.
I have no questions, so do we have further questions?
And there's no changes since the time we brought it forward last time.
Okay, just like to be given a load.
Okay.
Okay, and there's no public comment on this item? All righty, do we have a motion?
I would like to move adoption of board policy five, one, four, five dot nine.
I'll second. So Lando makes the motion, and Dolby seconds to approve, last was unanimous, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Thank you, so we have four yeses and an no.
I, I did want to comment in meeting with the, the people that, from the coalition, very productive meeting, very productive input and insights from them, and, and so I'm glad to be able to vote for approval.
I just have to apologize, I, this is the second time I've done this tonight, just trying to move right through things, and forgot to ask if there was any discussion that the board would like to have before we move into the vote, we did just vote to approve it, but if anybody would like to state, you know, their, their position on their vote, please do so, I'm so sorry, because I don't need to do that. Okay, we'll move on to eight point four point three, this is informational, so first reading of revised, updated, new board policies.
So we have several board policies that we're bringing that are updated, typically what we do is we have a first reading, this allows the public and the board the opportunity to read it, kind of digest it between now and the next board meeting, as always, if there are any questions, please email, call, and we'll get answers back to you on that, as well as if you have suggestions for changes to any of these policies.
Do we have public comment, public comment?
We do not have public comment on this, and they will be back for the board meeting on the twenty-sixth for a final reading and approval.
Okay, if there's no questions for clarification at this time, we'll move forward, since this is informational only, but next is items from the floor, and I don't see any folks from the audience that would like to make a public comment at this time, we also had no board members request to agendize an item, therefore, I will ask if there's a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
All right, so moved, thank you.